Good morning, members of council and staff and visitors. I will call this committee the whole meeting to order. Mr. Clerk, could you do a roll call? And can you explain the technology that is in the council chambers now, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. By this point, all members of council have had at least one opportunity through standing committee meetings to utilize the new technology in our council chambers. I just want to provide a couple reminders for how the technology operates to ensure a smooth flow for today's committee of the whole meeting. With respect to microphones and requesting to speak, if you are here in person, you only need to press the request to speak button on your panel. It will light up green to indicate that you are in the request to speak list. When the chair calls your name to speak, you do not need to press the button again. Your microphone will come on automatically. For members participating electronically, you will also press the request to speak button in the bottom center of your electronic screen, which will light up green to indicate that you are in the list. We will be using electronic voting for today's meeting. When a recorded vote is called and for roll call, please press yes or no on your panel to indicate your response to the question. Electronic participants will also receive a prompt to press yes or no, and results will be displayed at the close of the voting period. If you encounter any technical difficulties with the voting, please let us know so that we can record it accordingly. I'll now conduct a recorded roll call. Please press yes on your panel if you are present.
Okay, members of council, thank you. Mr. Clerk, declarations, please. We're good. Members of council, I'm operating off a fairly interesting screen up here with all this technology, so just bear with me. Your speakers list will come up on my screen here. This will be the first time that we've used it, so I'm hoping that there's no challenges, but if there is, just bear with the clerk and I today. There are no statutory public meetings. We have three delegations today. First delegation is Mr. Bart Hawkins, Kreps, Boonville residence, re implications of Bill 23 on the region of Durham. Well, I'll try again. How's that? Okay. So our first delegation is Mr. Bart Hawkins, Kreps, Boonville resident, re implications of Bill 23 on the region of Durham. On Cal, it relates to Cal 2022, Cal 33. Mr. Kreps?
Yes, can you hear me?
We can hear you, and you have five minutes.
Okay, thank you for allowing me to speak. In 2050, there are expected to be 1.3 million people residing in Durham region and many millions more nearby. Those residents should benefit from the far sighted project enacted in 2015, Rouge National Urban Park. The park is and should remain a vital protection for a precious and diverse ecosystem. The park should protect beautiful streams, wetlands, and savannas, which are home to dozens of species at risk. And the park should protect the agricultural community that exists inside and next to the park. These values, if protected now, will be even more precious to our children and grandchildren in 2050. But these values are threatened by the actions of our provincial government in Bills 23 and 39. I hope that Durham council takes a clear stand against the province's plans and for the priceless amenity that the Rouge National Urban Park can be. We all recognize that a beautiful river valley, even if set aside as a park, will only remain beautiful if the adjacent watershed is also protected. In the case of Rouge Park, a large area of Greenbelt is immediately adjacent, and Premier Ford wants to see this land turned into subdivisions. As many hectares of ground are paved or otherwise made impermeable, subdivisions result in rapid runoff of rainfalls. Runoff from pavement contains many chemical contaminants, which threaten the species in the valleys below. Parks Canada has objected to Bill 23 and 39, noting that the Duffins Rouge Agricultural Preserve borders the town line swamp wetland complex. That wetland, arguably the most ecologically sensitive area in the park, is home to dozens of protected species. Parks Canada is right to sound the alarm. They had a right to be consulted before Bills 23 and 39 were put forward. There is a clear basis for the federal government to challenge Bills 23 and 39, and Durham region should support such a challenge. Both the park and the agricultural preserve have the express purpose of maintaining a viable agricultural community within the GTA. This too is at risk. If the park is surrounded by urban development, agriculture within the park will be little more than a curiosity by 2050. A viable agriculture requires supporting social and business infrastructure. Farms need the ability to share machinery, availability of knowledgeable help when one farmer is ill, and viable local marketing channels. These factors are threatened if the farms in the preserve are turned into housing tracts and the farms in the park are orphaned from the larger farming community. In sum, if the province removes a huge area from the Greenbelt in Pickering, deadly consequences will rain down on threatened species in the Rouge Park, and the vibrant agricultural practices in the area will be reduced to a museum piece. In that scenario, Rouge National Urban Park in 2050 will be a sad reminder of the beauty that was sacrificed in the 2020s. Our grandchildren may still be able to visit a large park within our region, but it will serve as a testament to all that has been lost. Is that the legacy we want to leave our descendants? I urge you to tell the province that Durham region unequivocally opposes the removal of the agricultural preserve and adjacent properties from the Greenbelts. I urge you to convey to the province and to the government of Canada that Durham region strongly supports the full integrity of Rouge National Urban Park. Thank you.
Thank you, members of council. Questions to the delegation? Sorry. Okay, sorry, thank you. First is councillor Wood.
Yeah, through the chair, and thank you very much for speaking about this very important topical subject, Mr. Hawkins. The, and you're speaking about certainly the, there's 15 areas in the Greater Golden Horseshoe where the province has, I guess if you want to say selected, to have areas removed from the Greenbelt, and three of those are in Durham region. I guess in Pickering, the city of Pickering, the town of Ajax, and certainly where you live, within the municipality of Clarendon. Now, we had this discussion at council at municipal Clarendon. I don't know if you were listening in. I did ask the director of planning, the removal of 35 hectares of land that which are in the Greenbelts, was it necessary and did we have enough within the urban boundary to accommodate the growth projections that the province has, I guess, imposed, if I can use that term? Now, your feelings on the removal within Durham region obviously are very well known and spoken, especially in Clarendon. Could you speak about that one, that piece?
Certainly, yes. I have, I've spoken in a variety of ways to councillors directly and through, through media, et cetera, about the removal from Greenbelt in Clarendon, particularly as it's, as it's being proposed with, with no real addition and certainly no additional farmland to compensate. So I'm, I'm firmly against the entire 15 parcels, you know, the whole lot being removed from the Greenbelt. I think it's a, it's a terrible precedent that would really mean the Greenbelt from now on, at least as long as Ford is in, is in the premier's office, is just a suggestion. And if this precedent is allowed to be set, who knows what the Greenbelt actually means? So I've, I've chosen to speak today primarily about the park next to Rouge Park, but I'm certainly concerned about the impact on the whole region.
Now, have you had an opportunity to speak to your provincial member of parliament to express your views?
I have not, although I have written him and I have phoned. I have not received a response from him.
Okay. Thank you very much there.
Thank you.
Members of council, I'm looking at the speakers list. Is there any additional? Seeing none, I would like to thank you for your delegation today.
Thank you.
We'll move on to our second delegation of this morning. It is Bridget Soper, Pickering resident, and Carmen Lishman, Pickering resident. Durham region to respond to the provincial consultation on proposed amendments to the Greenbelt plan. Good morning and welcome.
Good morning, is this? Thank you.
And could you identify yourself, please?
Yes, I will. My name is Carmen Lishman, and I am a resident of 485 White Vale Road in North Pickering.
Okay, thank you, and you have five minutes.
Thank you very much. I'd like to begin today by acknowledging the land that we are meeting on. In the spirit of truth and reconciliation, I want to acknowledge that the Durham region forms a part of the traditional and treaty territories of the Mississaugas of Skougog Island First Nation and the Chippewas of Georgina Island First Nation. And I want to thank you all today for having me to, to share this moment with you and remind us that on Wednesday, January 29th, 2020, Durham Regional Council voted to declare a climate emergency. This declaration recognizes environmental sustainability and climate change as priorities in Durham region's strategic plan and as a factor in the decisions of regional council. The regional staff kept this priority in mind when it did a detailed analysis of the implications of Bill 23, and that was a very good analysis. It stated unequivocally that the proposed Greenbelt removals were inconsistent with the provincial and regional shared goal to achieve a healthy and complete community in Durham region. While our delegation is concerned about the devastating impacts of Bill 23 and Bill 39, our primary focus is on the removal of 7,400 acres from the Greenbelt, of which almost 5,000 acres, or approximately two thirds, is in Durham region, in Pickering, and will destroy the protected lands of the Duffins Rouge Agricultural Preserve. Our previous allegation spoke to the same issue and made very, very strong point that the national park will be compromised ecologically as a result. This is fertile area of Class 1 soil, which had been dedicated to agriculture and set aside in perpetuity. Perpetuity means forever. And four layers of legislative protection were put in place to ensure that the special status of that land. However, for the Ford government, a stroke of the pen was sufficient to remove all four layers of protection and impose urban straul on these fertile lands. I live and am raising my family in the hamlet of White Vale, located at the northeast corner of the agricultural preserve. I am a biologist by training, and I am familiar with much of the flora and fauna of the agricultural preserve. On a daily basis, I admire the enormous chevrons of wild geese, great blue herons, countless songbirds, and other wildlife, large and small, on a daily basis from our home. I am speaking here today on behalf of several of our White Vale neighbors. On White Vale's east side, we are seeing day to day the massive sprawl of the Seton Development inch closer and closer to our heritage hamlet and to the Valley of the East Duffins. 70,000 people will live in Seton by 2030. It had been planned for the last 20 years, and it is not even 10% complete. And now we hear that the news of this development of the agricultural preserve will start within three years. I mean, think about what that will, the implications of that for the rest of our region. The province's 2025 timeline will be an incentive for developers to start removing topsoil and fill small watercourses in a hurry, regardless of their actual plans to develop this land. This deadline is a sinister joke, even if construction is not started on the agricultural preserve and it is supposedly returned to the Greenbelt. The damage to the fertile soil and the hydrology will be irreversible. We will have lost this farmland forever, in addition to the 319 acres of fertile farmland that we lose daily, daily in Ontario. Did you know that it takes approximately 100 years for one inch of fertile soil to form? This is why it is so crucial that we protect the little that we have. The Ontario Federation of Agriculture, OFA, states that agriculture and food in Ontario is actually a major economic driver, contributing $47,000 billion annually to the provincial economy and employing nearly 1 million Ontarians. It is one of the major industries in Durham. Obliterating the Duffins Rouge Agricultural Preserve will certainly have a negative effect on our region's economy. In addition, research has shown that urban agriculture, urban agricultural land increases access to healthy, affordable fresh produce and provides communities with opportunities to learn about nutrition and growing food. I have had the honor to participate in a large scale community gardening project in North Pickering and have seen the incredible bounty that Class 1 farmland can produce. And I will tell you, it is impressive. Agriculture in the near cities is good for the environment, for people, for health, for ecosystems, and for the climate. Finally, according to Parks Canada's November 29th response to the, to Bill 23, should this land, which is immediately adjacent to the Rouge National Urban Park, be removed from the Greenbelt, there is a probable risk of irreversible harm to the wildlife, natural ecosystems, and agricultural landscapes within the Rouge National Urban Park, as we just heard about. The Durham Regional Council has to stand for what it believes in and for the interests of Durham residents, that there is indeed a climate emergency, that we need our green space, forests, wetlands, and farmlands. You must request that the Greenbelt stay whole and that the Duffins Rouge Agricultural Preserve, an integral part of Durham's social, economical, and ecological and so cultural fabric, be protected in perpetuity as promised. We do not need to repeal the Greenbelt Act, nor the DRAP Act, Duffins Rouge Agricultural Preserve Act, in order to build affordable housing. This is a fallacy, and everybody, including our premier, knows it. You regional chair and councillors, you will bear responsibility for this destruction if you do not stand up and very strongly word unambiguously that we want our agricultural lands in Durham protected. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions to the delegation? Seeing none, thank you for your presentation.
Thank you very much.
Our next delegation is Dawn Harvey, Pickering residence. Durham region's response to provincial consultation on the proposed amendments to the Greenbelt plan. Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Harvey. You have five minutes, please, when you're ready.
Thank you. Yeah, my name is Dawn Harvey. I live at 470 Concession Road 3 in Pickering, right in the Duffins Rouge Agricultural Preserve in the hamlet of Cherrywood. I wanted to commend Durham region on its response to the provincial government's amendments to the Greenbelt plan. The amendments have nothing at all to do with increased access to housing, much less affordable housing. The amendments seem to be nothing more than an attempt to reward developers who have made contributions to the conservative party. As region staff has pointed out, there are a great number of housing units already approved and in the planning process in the region. If the goal is to get units to market quickly, accelerating those projects is far more efficient than ramming through projects on the Greenbelt lands, for which there have been no long-term infrastructure or services planning, no public consultation, no input from the conservation authority, indigenous communities, or any other interested parties. The holes in this overall plan are many and large, and the province has left municipalities scrambling to fill them. The timing of the legislation is also ridiculously suspect. It was passed shortly after provincial and municipal elections, during which it was never raised as an issue, largely because the province and the premier had said very clearly the Greenbelt would not be touched, that no removal of land or land exchanges were proposed, and that the government would not consider removal of any lands from the Greenbelt. It was passed very quickly during the transition between municipal governments, obviously to minimize the response. Municipal governments in the province are almost unanimously opposed to the overall framework of the legislated changes. It includes unrealistic timelines for approval, which are designed to make real consultation all but impossible. And perhaps most importantly, as we just heard, it specifically requires that the Greenbelt lands be physically destroyed before the next provincial election. The government knows, this government knows, and the developers whose idea this was also know, the premier himself said this idea wasn't just his, that some of the top developers in the country proposed it to him, and no other party, and perhaps not even another different conservative leader and cabinet, will go along with this plan. The developers need to be paid back now and fast before somebody can come in and change it. So thank you to the regional staff for their thoughtful response to the province and to this council for its anticipated support of that response. But make your position very clear. Tell the province that Durham region unequivocally opposes the removal of land from the Greenbelt. Thank you.
Thank you. Members of council, questions to the delegation? Seeing none, thank you for your delegation today. Members of council, we'll move on to presentations. Our first presentation is Ian McVey, manager of sustainability, and Jackie Hornwig, executive director of the Brilliant Institute, Ontario Tech University, on the evolution of the Durham Region Roundtable on Climate. Good morning. Oh, just one second. Okay, your mic runs on now.
All right. Thank you, Chair Henry, and committee members, for the opportunity to speak about this proposed evolution of the Durham Region Roundtable on Climate Change. As Chair Henry mentioned, I'm joined by Jackie Hornwig, who works as the executive director of the Brilliant Energy Institute, which is a newly formed institute based within Ontario Tech University. We've got a lot of slides. They're mostly there for reference, and we'll get, get through them relatively quickly, given that I know we've got a number of presentations on the agenda. So I'm going to cover a bit of the context and rationale for change, and then we'll hand it over to Jackie to speak about the model that we're proposing, and then I'll finish with some next steps. So the context, of course, climate change is happening. As of 2020, Earth's climate has warmed by about 1.2 degrees Celsius, which is the warming that's responsible for the, the extreme impacts that we're seeing, the atmospheric river that hit DC, the heat dome globally, as well as local impacts like the DeRachio storm that hit Pickering and Exbridge, as well as sort of slower onset impacts like declining ice cover on Lake Simcoe, Lake Skougog, which has, of course, significant impact on those ice fishing industries and agriculture, et cetera. So that's really the context for, you know, what is now globally the race to net zero. Under the Paris Agreement on Climate Change, more than 190 countries have agreed to work towards keeping Earth's temperature below 2% rise above pre-industrial levels. Canada, as a signatory to the Paris Agreement, has signed the net zero, or has legislated the Net Zero Emissions Accountability Act, which commits it to hitting that net zero by 2050. And you can see there, there's, you know, we're joining a large number of countries, cities, regions that are making similar commitments. Local governments are really critical in this global fight, this global race to, to net zero. According to the Federation of Canadian Municipalities, local governments have control over upwards of 50 to 60% of greenhouse gas emissions. That's through our own fleets and facilities and vehicles, which are estimated to represent upwards of 5% of total emissions. That's governed by our Durham Corporate Climate Action Plan, which relies on a lot of interdepartmental coordination and collaboration. But we have a lot more influence over emissions that relate to land use, transportation buildings. That requires a lot of collaboration and coordination with the local municipalities, with the conservation authorities, with the energy utilities, with our academic partners, and the list goes on and on, school boards, et cetera. And so really, that's really the, the context for this proposal, is that we really need to up our, our ability to coordinate and collaborate across organizations to, to create the incentives and policy frameworks that are going to enable us to, to move more rapidly along this race towards net zero greenhouse gas emissions. And so we have a council-induced, council-endorsed low carbon pathway. This was endorsed by council in early 2019 under the Durham Community Energy Plan, that, you know, this shows that the most cost-effective emission reductions are in the transportation and the residential building sector, which really relates to how we get around, how we heat and cool our homes, and really speaks to the importance of local government action. You can see, of course, that this pathway does not get us towards net zero. It is actually a 66% emission reduction over 2016 levels. And so there is a need to refresh this pathway towards aligning with the government of Canada and global commitments. But nonetheless, there's lots of examples underway. This transition is happening here in Durham, both through municipal leadership, and we've got the Whitby Sports Complex up in Brooklyn that's proposed to be a net zero facility through private development leadership, the Altona Towns in Pickering, running on a, on a microgrid. We've got Ontario Tech with numerous examples of sustainable initiatives, and of course, larger initiatives like the Darlington Small Modular Reactor. So again, this transition is happening, but when we look at the data, it's not happening nearly quickly enough. And you can see in terms of the past five years or six years of emissions data, it's relatively flat. We had a low point with the pandemic, of course, when we were all staying home, but that, those emissions are trending back up again in 2021, and we expect that to continue in 2022. So we have our work cut out for us. And that's really the context for the climate emergency declaration that the, that Regional Council made in January 2020, along with most of the other local area municipalities. I know several have committed to the UNFCCC, UN Framework on Climate Change Race to Zero campaign, including Ajax and Whitby, as well as Ontario Tech. That's sort of the context for these, for this sort of movement at the, at the local level. And so that really wraps up really the rationale for change. We need greater levels of coordination and leadership across the region. We need some, you know, systems of transparency and accountability through annual reporting on progress at the, at the community level. My direction from the CIO has been relentless implementation of the plans that we have existing, and so the capacity for us to do that, you know, monitoring and reporting at a bird's eye level is limited. And, you know, when we look at good governance, it does speak to having that sort of function of monitoring, reporting, the independent of the people that are, that are, that are delivering. As a committee of council, the Durham Region Roundtable, which has been in existence since 2009, is not independent and does not have the resources to develop that sort of annual reporting. reporting and multi-stakeholder dialogue. Furthermore, we actually have two advisory committees that focus on environmental sustainability matters, the Roundtable, as well as the Durham Environmental Advisory Committee. And so we have an opportunity to streamline that and elevate the Roundtable to more fully fulfill the functions that we're describing. So that's the rationale and context. I'm thinking and hand it over to Jackie. Thank you.
Good morning. Thank you very much. As mentioned, I'm Jackie Hornwig with the Brilliant Energy Institute at Ontario Tech University. I see some familiar faces, as well as some new ones, which is always a great mix. So really excited to be here. Before I move into the how, because Ian did a really good job of the why, I do just want to explain a little bit about Brilliant Energy Institute. As mentioned, we're about a year old at the university, and actually, I'm going to be talking to you a bit about collaborative governance model. And Brilliant Energy Institute itself is really built on a collaborative governance model. It was created to be a driver to net zero transition across Canada, working with external partners, but also drawing on the energy expertise at the university. In fact, energy is about a third of the, all of the research that's done at the university, and we have multiple experts in various facets of that. In addition to going to net zero, it's also about how we ensure that we maintain energy security, how we look at how we are going to create energy equity as we're doing it, and also to look at socioeconomic benefits. And I think that all of those things really relate to what we're trying to do here with this project. So if we look at what is a collaborative governance methodology to drive change, really it is about extending the sphere of influence to scale and hasten the pace of the change. And as councillors and mayors, you all actually do a really good job of this, because that's how you get elected, and it's how you make change within your own communities every day. So it's about working with internal partners, but also working with the right external partners to achieve the goals that you're trying to get to. And when Ian talked, and I believe it was slide six, about those three different pieces, and he talked about the one where you have no control and you have limited control, that's where this model becomes so effective, because in addition to doing the things that you have control over, it allows you to extend and strengthen the control and the influence that you have on those that you don't necessarily. Two key things about the governance model is that it brings the right people together with different perspectives to bring, you know, it's sort of like looking at the whole elephant from all different sides. And also, it's about building trust through those shared, the shared vision, the collaborative decision-making, and that shared control of the destiny, because all of us, of course, really feel strongly about having some control over where we're moving as communities. So if we look at what does the governance model look like in terms of, you know, thinking about what it's going to look like on the ground, if you look on the left-hand side there, there's two pieces that are really being done in parallel, and one fits into the other. And then it's bringing together those internal and those external pieces so that you have that greater accountability and greater engagement, both through government, but also with those external partners, such as industry, such as individuals in your community, residents, businesses, who all have a piece to play, a part to play in this, but also have a stake in the outcome. And so one part is coordinated and delivered by the region and through the CAO office and through the sustainability team. The other is through Brilliant Energy Institute at Ontario Tech University. And in fact, with me today is one of our internal collaborators, Dr. Daniel Hornwig, whose work you are probably familiar with from his role on the region's Roundtable for Climate Change and Sustainability. And Dr. Hornwig is, will be leading up the report that will be developed, using, working with international experts, also working with grad students and others that he'll draw upon at the university, but also really drawing upon those boxes that you see in the bottom part of that middle, of that middle column. And then the outcome of that is that first you're going to have that integration, coordination, financing that happens through that, through the region and the CAO's office, and then that moves up into that strategic leadership and oversight, community oversight, which again includes, and I'm going to talk about this in a moment, includes the region, includes the municipalities, but also some of those other parts of society. So the membership of the leadership committee is in fact municipal elected officials, including the regional chair, mayor, or delegate from regional council for each of the area municipalities, but also First Nation community through the Mississaugas of Skugog Island, academic through Ontario Tech, and potentially other academic institution representatives will be drawn into this process as well. And then from industry and civil society organizations. The role of this is really an annual review of the report that will be developed and participating in the annual forum. There will be a couple of meetings a year. I'm told that it's good to bring coffee and cookies to that, so we'll make sure that that happens. And that part of the role of this committee will really be to endorse the identified priorities and the actions for implementation, and to serve as champions, to really help to raise awareness and visibility of the work that's being done and drive to some of those changes. The report itself is two parts. One is a greenhouse gas inventory that will be broken down both by geography and also by sector, and is an assessment of progress. So at that forum, part of the role is to really see where do we need to go based on what has changed, look at the metrics, look at where progress has been made, where there are gaps, do a reset, and then move forward on that. And so the report each year will be an opportunity for you to take stock of where you are, and it will also celebrate the successes that you've made as a community, and help again to really draw in that engagement and visibility of the work. The interorganizational working groups, there's a number of them that we're looking at in really just breaking it into the different pieces. But membership, again, is really that internal, external partners. The focus is to respond to the various priorities in a way that is managed, and that's part of the rationale for breaking it into the different pieces. And then post-form, again, will have that formal identification organization, and the working groups will be dissolved or reconfigured based on the changing priorities and needs. On the Implementation Management Committee, this is led by the CAO or a commissioner. You have the region, the local municipalities, energy utilities, and the non-voting advisor from the Brilliant Energy Institute. That could potentially be myself, but also quite likely to be Dr. Hornwig or one of his colleagues. And then roles and responsibilities, review, endorse, support the implemented plans developed by the working groups. So this is just the reporting cycle. Really, September is the beginning and end, because that's where we do the evaluation. And then, starting in October to February, we formulate and provide alignment on what comes next in terms of the research engagement, start the work again based on what was the outcome of the report. And then in March, we go to an implementation committee for, the implementation committee for review, and then just move through the cycle again with the report and the forum, which will happen in September, and then the process just begins again, hence the circle that you see there. And I'm just going to turn it over to Ian to do next steps.
Great. Thanks, Jackie. I should say that this proposal has received endorsement from both the Durham Region Roundtable on Climate Change back in June, as well as the Durham Environmental Advisory Committee in July. So our next steps, as outlined here, are to seek council endorsement of this proposal. If we are successful in that, we would execute an agreement with Ontario Tech U to govern the operations of this and the funding commitment. We will look to come back to Regional Council at the February 1st meeting to confirm appointments to the Roundtable in terms of the regional councillor representatives. We'll be reaching out to the mayors and confirming who from each local municipality will be sitting around that table, and then aim to have an initial meeting in March 2023 to confirm the terms of reference and schedule of work for the year to come. So that's all we have to say on this, and I look forward to any questions or discussion. Thank you.
Thank you. We have a number of requests to speak. First is councillor Lee.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you for the presentation. I think it's a very prudent idea to merge and get these governing bodies to be more independent. My question first is ultimately, so with recent provincial legislation, the idea of green building standards, which a lot of municipalities in Durham had recently adopted, are actually being removed. Where do we see our path to net zero then? So if we can't implement the building standards, which I think was our second most emitter of carbon outside of vehicles, I know this is very high level, but just to anticipate over the next coming years, how do we, how do you suggest we will get to net zero over the next few years?
Thank you for the question, councillor Lee, through the chair to you. So we know that with the initial Bill 23 proposal, that they were proposing to strip the ability of municipalities to implement green standards through site plan approval. Through the committee stage, revisions were made that maintained that ability to implement green, green development standards. My planning colleagues can correct me if I'm wrong, but that's my understanding from reading the bill that went into royal assent. So we are working under the assumption that the local municipalities in Durham can continue to implement those green standards, which are, have a tiered pathway towards net zero-ready or zero-carbon levels of performance in new construction.
Okay, that's really good to know, because as we're seeing, like you just mentioned at the beginning, we are nearing our pre-pandemic levels of emissions right now, and that's obviously a pretty scary thing, considering all the positive things we've been doing as a region. I think one of the biggest takeaways will be the annual report on carbon emissions. You said it'll be broken down by municipality as well? So you'll be able to tell who the biggest emitters are, who's making the most progress, correct?
That's, yes.
And then will, and then how are you able to differentiate them between vehicle emissions, building emissions? Like, how's that breakdown being done?
Great question. There, I mean, there will be a methodology developed through the Brilliant Energy Institute, and we are really lucky to have the expertise there on carbon inventories. We'll be looking at empirical data through the utilities around energy consumption, through Enbridge, through Alexicon, offshore power, which will give a really good handle on building sector emissions. Through, I mean, vehicle data is a lot more challenging. You can get, you know, fuel sales from the gas stations in Durham, but that, of course, doesn't, isn't necessarily of complete representation, because people are driving through, not necessarily residing in Durham. So we'll be looking at different methodologies to capture those. The large final emitters, like the St. Mary's Cement Plant, has a compliance obligation to report annually because of its size, of how much emissions it represents. So again, there's a number of data pieces that will be brought together to create that picture that has a disaggregated local municipality by local municipality. It won't just be the carbon emissions, but also the indicators that feed into that. So, you know, how many, how many building permits are aligning with the green development standard Tier 2 or Tier 3, for example? So some of those interim indicators that lead towards the outcome of greenhouse gas emissions that we're hoping to achieve.
Okay, great. I think that's been the missing piece in terms of following it. It's just ultimately, we never know where we stand. We hope we're doing a good job, but obviously we're kind of lapsing a bit. So I'm looking forward to seeing the changes and suggestions this group will provide. So thank you very much, and thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Next is Mayor Foster.
So thank you, Mr. Chair. I will point out, Mr. Clerk, that I did not push the button. Jackie, thank you for being here. Dan, it is so good to see you as well. I think we're going to have to talk to you, speak to you of the other Dan. I just, I mean, you should know, not you, Mayor Carter, the dynamic duo. Just a quick question, I'll make it up to you later. One of my concerns, and I'd like to hear from the two of you, we could address this during the report, is the number of members. And I get concerned, Jack, you talked about hastening control. In my experience, as you get larger groups of people, very frequently, you get far less done. So I agree with this. We need to do this. It's, you know, it's a wonderful undertaking, but between 19 and 21 people around the table really concerns me, and I wonder if we have the, you know, the cart before the horse, where perhaps specific area, specific direction comes back for specific tasks that we can do here and come back to the municipality.
So I'll speak to this first, and then maybe Ian will want to add to it. But I think there are different methodologies, and I think that that is an important part of it. So there is the report that is drawing on statistics and modeling and all of those pieces that are going to bring information. With the collaborative governance, one of the risks is exactly as you say, is that there, you lose some of the control, and if it isn't well-managed, and if there aren't some things that are formalized, it can, that can undermine what the outcomes are. And so I think one thing that's going to be really important for us as we're developing this model is to look at those formalizations, look at those, the way that things are facilitated, where there is that opportunity for those small groups beyond the 21. I don't think, you know, I think often when you come to council, when I used to cover it many decades ago, there would be often the comment, let's not solve it at the table, let's go back. And I think that it's, in part, it's how you manage the collaborative governance model, and I think that will be in part our collective task, is to make sure that those pieces are managed and that the right things are done at those tables, but that there are other, those other pieces where other work is done that draws, that we draw upon, that allows us to get that depth and then bring it to that larger group discussion.
Do you see the larger group being broken into subcommittees? And again, I'll come back to, you know, I sit on a couple of, you know, of large groups, and the reality is there are two or three voices, or four or five, but the broader membership time simply doesn't permit, you know, full, full engagement from all of the committee members. And again, if we've got 21 individuals and a couple of hours and presentations, I just don't see how you engage a group. And we frankly see it here sometimes as well. We need to pick and choose our spots, right?
So I think that's not the, I mean, I think that's one slice, but that's not all of it, right? So there are those working committees, there's those different levels as well, and different work that will be going on within those areas that will come together in addition to the report that, that Dr. Hornwig and his colleagues will be working on and bringing that information as well. So I think there are many different places for this, but I think your point is important. And as we go through and look at the development of the methodologies, not only in terms of the report, but in terms of the committees and the facilitation, how we get input. And, you know, in facilitating meetings, and sometimes there's meetings of aided people, where you bring people together, and part of the success or failure of that is how you do it, and how you allow for people with different kinds of desire in terms of how they provide their input, to provide that input. And today, in fact, we're having a meeting where we have people online, and we have people in person, and we have different methods of drawing upon their input. And I think that that's going to be an important part of this, is looking at how do we use best practices in engagement and in facilitated meetings to make sure that we're getting the most out of it, and that we're getting those perspectives from everybody, not just the people who have, you know, are the extroverts in the room. And some of us, and I'll include myself in that, sometimes we tend to dominate because we have lots to say and we are very extroverted, and it's making sure that we also think about how other people like to provide input and making sure we're given those opportunities.
So thank you for that. Again, great undertaking. I'm clearly going to support it. It'll be interesting to see it move forward. I want to take the opportunity to thank you and BEI for the work that you're doing with Canacc. So for members of committee, the Canadian Association of Nuclear Host Communities, BEI has stepped up, and I think you may be stepping up more in the very near future to do some really important work. Thank you for that.
Agreed. And such an important piece, actually, that fits right into this as well, because communities like through Canacc play such an important role in where we're going to go in the transition, both at the local level in terms of the things that you have direct control, but I think, again, with Canacc, it's such an important illustration of a place where it's not all in the control of the communities, but the communities have ways to input and make sure that their voice is heard, and that they have objective, evidence-based information upon which to draw in order to do that.
Thank you. Mayor Schumer.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And through you, thank you very much for coming out. I'm very intrigued by this, this proposal. I just, some of my questions have either been answered or partially answered, but I'd like to, or for you to clarify exactly how this body will interact with the local municipalities outside of the obvious membership of the mayors or delegates on the, on the board.
Thank you for the question. Through the chair to you, Mayor Schumer. You know, as Jackie was saying, this, the work of this committee isn't so much at the committee table itself, but those members acting as champions at their respective council tables for the types of initiatives that we need to see. And so the idea is that as members of the committee, you'll learn from the annual report, from the forum, where we're at, what some of the priorities for action are. some of the priorities for action are. And then when it comes to the decision-making table, be that council, or be that a board of directors, if it's a utility member, be able to, to use that information to influence the decision-making there. So that's sort of the concept that we have here. This is, the leadership committee itself isn't going to have decision-making authority over the decisions of local councils or boards of directors, but rather an opportunity to influence the, the decisions made there, if that, if that makes sense.
Okay. And just to expand on Counselor Lee's comments or questions regarding, on your one slide, you had greenhouse gas inventory, and it would be down at even the municipal level. So I, I'm just, you know, part of my, my first question morphs into this, is, is how is that essentially going to be done at the municipal level? Will there be close interaction with, say, municipal staff at the area municipalities on determining this, on, on, on good, going through and, and determining this, this so-called inventory of greenhouse gas emissions at each municipal level? I'm just wondering, how detailed is that going to be, or is it going to be kind of a high level based on some statistics?
Yeah. Great question. I mean, we're going to be relying on a variety of data sources, including municipal property assessment data, which will, we would work through local municipalities to, to secure, building permit data, for, for example. Where that information is not available, either through a lack of capacity or, or available resources to produce it, we will rely on alternative methods that might be more statistical or modeling. But the, the idea is to get, work as closely as possible with the staff to get the, the, the data that's going to enable, you know, as close to a real-time assessment of, of energy consumption and greenhouse gas emissions as, as possible.
If, if a municipality has already, or is in the process of bringing in outside organizations to assess greenhouse gas inventories, would, would that be something that should be forwarded on, obviously, to you guys? I'm just wondering, that might be a little bit more detailed for one municipality than high level for another. I'm just wondering how that would work, because in Brock, we have formed our first standing committee for climate, and one of the first tasks there is going to be a detailed inventory, if you want to call it that, of greenhouse gas emissions. So that might be more detailed than, say, you guys are going to do for Clarrington at a more high level. Is that something that should be shared, or would it be apples and oranges?
Absolutely. I think we would like to work in close collaboration with that, with that committee to ensure that methodologies are aligned. The idea is that we do want a, a methodologically consistent approach to this, so that we're comparing apples to apples between municipalities. So we want to work with that committee to, to evaluate and inform a, a methodology that could be applied region-wide. And I think there's an opportunity here for us to be more efficient with our use of resources in terms of conducting an inventory on a region-wide basis, consistent methodology, that's going to, you know, save costs and time in terms of having each area, local or municipality do their own thing that might not be sort of comparable one, one to another, if that, if that makes sense.
Yep, that, that answers it. Thank you very much.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Next in the request to speak is Counselor Jobb.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. And through you, thanks for the presentation. Much like Counselor Lee, what stood out to me was the climate emissions are going up, and that's definitely concerning. In a persistent COVID-19 environment, most workplaces are moving to the hybrid model. Where I'm getting at here is staff and council from, from all over the region. We, we travel upwards of an hour. Some people live outside, staff live outside the region, sometimes two hours away. Just myself, by, by attending this meeting today, saved two hours of carbon emissions from, from heading down to the region. Where I'm getting at here with this hybrid work model, that staff, the hot seating, I think it was called yesterday, and council, in your opinion, Ian, is this fall in line with the intent of the region, with the climate emergency two years ago? Is this us doing our, our little part where we can in the new world?
Right. Great question. Through, through the chair to you, Counselor Jobb. Certainly, we're seeing with the Region Workplace Modernization Project, moving towards the, the, sorry, the permanent hybrid working arrangements, we are seeing fairly dramatic decreases in the carbon emissions related to employee commuting, and certainly to councillor commuting, as well as it relates to committee and council meetings. We do, we have quantified that. I don't have those numbers right in front of me, but maybe we can work with the team running the workplace modernization project to follow up, if you're interested in, in what those estimates are.
I would definitely be interested in that, and that is great news to hear, and I'm glad your opinion on that. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. That's all.
Thank you. Next in the request to speak is Counselor Wu.
Yeah, and through the chair, and thank you, Ian and Jackie. A very interesting presentation, and certainly I'm a, a great supporter of the Durham Region Roundtable on Climate Change and Durham Environmental Advisory Committee. One of the slides you mentioned, you had local government is a critical actor in global response. And at the, and we have a role to play indirectly and directly. Now, when you say global response, can you, what can we do at this level when we should be at lockstep, and you say collaboration, and we should have consultation, not only here in, in Durham Region, but with our provincial counterparts, and certainly our federal counterparts, in, I guess we want to say, fighting climate change?
Okay, good, good question. Thank you. Through the chair to you, Counselor Wu. You know, the most recent assessment by the Intergovernmental Panel on Climate Change indicates that upwards of seventy percent of global climate emissions occur within urban areas, and so are under the influence of decisions made by local governments. So, you know, I think the, the most critical areas of, of decision-making to implement those emissions are around transportation and land use planning. So building compact communities that are connected to infrastructure that enables transit, usage, active transit, walking, biking. That's going to be the, the lowest cost opportunity for us to achieve our net zero pathway, because it enables lower energy consumption. Even if that energy consumption is electric or lower carbon, we want to be minimizing that as much as possible so that there's more available to decarbonize other sectors that are harder to, 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 to decarbonize. So that's really where the rubber hits the road, so to speak, is sort of the integration of trend, land use and transportation planning, where local governments, both regional and local, have an opportunity to implement change.
Now, I guess right at this moment, there's a conference going on in, in Montreal, COP fifteen, and we're looking at, on a global scale, and, and one of the twenty-two targets is to reverse biodiversity loss and one of the increasing urban green space. How do you look at that?
Really good question, and certainly interesting dichotomy with some of the decisions around, you know, green belts removals, and that happening in the context of COP fifteen. I think we, we need to advocate, and to go back to your previous question, I'm sorry, I missed the point around working in collaboration with our provincial counterparts. I think a lot of that is advocacy at the regional council level, such as, you know, what's being brought forward around Bill twenty-three and the, and the green belt, in terms of, you know, regional council making a statement. But there's also a lot of staff-level collaboration that happens. We're working with the Ministry of Environment Conservation and Parks, Ministry of Natural, Natural Resource and Forestry to secure funding for wetland conservation initiatives. And so that work is ongoing at the staff level, in addition to work that happens at the political level between council and, and, and the provincial government. So it's a multi-level engagement, absolutely.
Okay. And one last question, and, and I look at what the great work that we're doing here in Durham Region and each of our own municipalities, but we aren't in a bubble. So whatever we do, I mean, it's a global, and you had mentioned, again, critical actors in a global, I guess, world. Right now, times are tough. The provincial government relaxes taxes on fuel at the pump. We have a carbon tax. So for all the good that we're trying to do, but on a global scale, unless everybody gets on board, you know, are we slowing things down? I think there's a, a target of, as far as global warming, that we have, what are we increasing, two per, or two degrees?
Two degrees Celsius is the target under the Paris Agreement on climate change, yeah.
So how, where are we going that, and especially on a global scale, that we can minimize that and try to get it that we're not increasing at all? Because we're doing our part here in Durham Region, but we're not in a bubble.
Right. So it's through the chair to you. So under the latest, latest projections, so that, so that globally, the policies that are, are being committed to or, or being implemented have us on track for between a two and a half to a three-degree temperature rise by the end of century. So that's the sort of scenario that's in uncharted territory in terms of, you know, human civilization. So big implications if we aren't able to layer on additional policies to get that down closer to under two, or ideally one point five degrees Celsius. So you rightly point out, there's, at this point, governments working at cross purposes, whether we're talking provincial, federal, or, or, you know, even the bilateral relationships between national governments at times. And so really, the, this solution that's being proposed here is about, within the bubble that we can control, i.e. regional, regional government, local governments, trying to create the lines of communication and collaboration such that we are more rowing in that same direction at a local level and doing our part in what is a complex challenge at the, at the global level, but hopefully proving approaches and methodologies that can be applied, you know, across other regions of the Greater Golden Herschel. And I know the, the Brilliant Energy Institute is also working with York Region as well, and so potential for us to work in terms of, you know, aligning our, our work there across the nine oh five area. Yeah, absolutely.
Sorry, I just want to add one thing on this, because I think this is a really important point as well, through the chair to you. And, and that is that it, it matters not only in terms of what is Durham doing to contribute to the forward motion for the global good, which is, of course, very, very important, but it also is really important because right now we're in a, in a point of transition, and there is a lot of back and forth. But at the end of the day, this is where we need to go. This is where we've committed as a country to hit the Paris Agreement. This is where the Canadian government has put into legislation requirement that we get to net zero by 2050. There is going to be increasing carbon taxes, so, you know, the sticks, if you will, but there will also be increasingly the carrots, the incentives, and the opportunities. And Durham Region, which has eleven thousand people who work in the energy sector, that has the, you know, depth of the energy expertise, has a university that has a depth of energy expertise, has the nuclear plants here, and all of the infrastructure that goes with that, has knowledgeable councils, all of those pieces are tremendous, and I, I've forgotten some things, but all to say, you have a tremendous competitive advantage. Oh, the other piece is that you also have a deep automotive history. And that automotive history combined with your energy history makes you an incredible place to do things like electrification, but also to take that, to draw upon that, and do some of the things that Ian just talked about at the local level in terms of land use planning, in terms of how do you influence individual change, and to actually use this as a competitive advantage, because that's what Canada does. We're a pretty small country, so you might say, well, what differences make what we do anyway? But it's going to make a big difference for Canada, being competitive globally. It's going to make a big difference for Durham Region, being competitive provincially, federally, globally. And that's another factor to consider, is that doing some of this hard work now puts you in a really good place down the road. If I can just go back to a works department analogy, where they say, you know, if you don't, if you don't do the maintenance, you don't give us the budget for the maintenance, at the end of the day, you're going to pay for the repairs. It's the same thing. You do the work now, you take advantage of that, you build that as part of your socioeconomic strategy in addition to your climate change strategy. And then down the road, you're not playing catch-up, and you're not spending the money, you know, putting money to carbon taxes, because instead you're getting the benefit of the incentive. So I think that's another point that shouldn't be lost as well.
I'll thank you both, Ian and Jackie, and much appreciated. And I think certainly myself and those around the table here, I think you have champions, and we can certainly be advocates. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor Neil.
Yeah, I think my question was answered. Thanks.
Thank you, Counselor Leahy.
Perfect. Thank you, Chair. Through you. So really grateful for the presentation here, fully supportive of what you're trying to achieve here. And back to your statement about the competition between municipalities, again, trying to be more on the incentive base, and trying to, more carrots and less sticks, because I think that's going to be more successful. Are we going to be able to measure things like what, like types of vehicles and other different pieces, or is it really just going to be an inventory of buildings and, and emissions in general? Like, how are we going to get down to the details per municipality, so we see, so we can try and create that friendly competition, and we as municipalities can try and encourage that with our residents, and try and be more on the incentivized side, is my first question.
Right, absolutely. So through, through the chair to you, Counselor Leahy, certainly we're looking to get as much data as we can beyond the building sector. We do have vehicle registration data available from the Ministry of Transportation that, that shows the number of EVs, plug-in hybrids, hybrids, and internal combustion vehicles that are registered within each local area municipality. So that's an important indicator that there feeds into the outcomes of, of energy consumption and greenhouse gas emissions. So we'll be looking to build a, a fairly robust dashboard of, of indicators that are not just sort of the, you know, end of the, you know, greenhouse gas emissions that would be emits, but more some of those things that feed into those, that as well, because ultimately, the, the greenhouse gas emissions is really a lagging indicator of decisions that are made around buildings and transportation and the like. So that's the ideas of, you know, robust dashboard that includes your transportation buildings and other data sets.
Yeah, and that's helpful, because, you know, it, it's just mostly doom and gloom, right? You see this big chart, it's all going to be terrible. You read online, it's like five or ten years, we don't change it, that's terrible. I want to try and get tangible incentives for residents, say, what can I do in my day-to-day that's going to have an impact, and how do I compete, let's say, against my neighbors, and what are the things that are just more tangible, achievable, and small incremental? And if we all do that together, we have a, an actual material impact. And then finally, my only other question was around, do we have a sense of what other incentives that we're going to provide? I know the provincial legislation is changing, but stuff coming out of the feds that we would be eligible here in Durham that will try incentivize residents to make extra changes. I know there's some of the, there's some improvements for the homes. Is there any other large or significant incentives that we can share with residents in the near time, whether about, be about vehicles or homes, to try and impact the two biggest areas where we're trying to lower our, our footprint?
Sure. So through, through the chair to you, there, you, you mentioned, you're alluding to the Durham Greener Homes program, where we have a deep energy retrofit rebate, providing up to $10,000 in incentives for a, a resident that wishes to undertake a deeper energy retrofit. So those incentives are available, and they include incentives for, or support for undertaking, installing electric vehicle charging infrastructure, if that's something that, that is, that is needed. You know, we are, through collaboration with the local municipalities, utilities are installing EV charging infrastructure in the community. We've gone more than 180 charging stations that are either in being installed or will be installed over the next couple of years, including, for the first time, on-street charging in downtown Oshawa, which is great to see in terms of the visibility in the place that people walk and, and shop and eat. So these sort of incentives and, and changing the infrastructure systems are, are, are certainly happening, and we'll look to build on that moving forward. Areas as well, I mean, the, the, the new construction side is a, is a challenge. We have the green standards. We're also looking to develop program of, of support for whether it's, you know, financial, non-financial likely, given the fiscal constraints, non-financial support to builders or homebuyers around encouraging adoption of higher tiers of energy performance beyond the minimum requirements that are within the, the, the green standards. We're looking at commercial institutional buildings as well, providing support to building benchmarking and disclosure, where we have a provincial legislative requirement to report for buildings over 50,000 square feet. Compliance with that is, I would use the word dismal, and there's limited enforcement, so we're looking to support, to stand up a program next year that will provide support to commercial institutional multi-unit residential building owners. Just to, what's the data? And how do you, how do you compare to versus others as an initial step towards providing a fuller support system for, for buildings in that sector?
Yeah, I know, appreciate you. If you can't measure it, can't improve it. So I appreciate the efforts, and those are my questions. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Counselor Mayor Petrie.
Thank you. Through you, Chair. Good morning. Thank you for the presentation. I just wanted to ask, it, like, on, on, in the same vein as, as most others that are probably tuning in or around the table, just curious to, to what, you know, the tangibles are in terms of how we can actually affect change, and what the impacts will be at the regional level. You mentioned some of the measurables that you'll be conducting. You mentioned some of the measurables that you'll be conducting relative to different municipalities. If you could expand through you Chair on, you know, what, um, maybe the, the, the most impactful considerations would be in a municipality in terms of emissions? What's the most impactful or I guess what's the most? I, I would say with the largest emissions, uh, what, what is that in, in a municipality?
Sure. So through, through you, the Chair to councillor Mayor Pietri, it really is, as we showed, the low carbon pathway, it's around transportation and buildings. The, the most cost-effective emission reductions. And so within that, as we're looking at, you know, potential doubling of population in, in Durham Region over the next several decades, ensuring that as much of that as possible is built within transit-oriented communities that are connected to infrastructure that enable, uh, people to take, take transit, not use a vehicle. Particularly for smaller trips, like, you know, going to get a loaf of bread or a liter of milk. You know, so that's, that's, that, that is the, really the most impactful, um, decision that local municipalities can, can provide is supporting transit range development and ideally connected to sort of district energy infrastructure like we're looking at Whitby, Clareton and other places.
And through your chair again, just to follow up on that, but what about a municipality's actual function in the delivery of service? Cause that's, that's my concern because that's our responsibility. What particular department or service is the most emitting or I guess the, the largest offender at, at this point in consideration to your plan?
Sure. So through the chair to you, I mean, when we, I think you're referring to our corporate carbon footprint as a municipal corporation.
Yes.
So within that, the largest share of our emissions is related to waste management, particularly our, our legacy landfills. They're now closed, but, you know, operating for in some cases 50 years, I believe. It's a lot of trash there that continues to emit, uh, emissions, uh, you know, often methane, which is a highs up, much higher global warming potential. After that, we're looking at, at wastewater, wastewater management. Think about Duffin Creek Water Fish Control Plant, other, other plants along the, the lake shore and in the north as well. That's the sort of the second largest share of emissions. Both of those areas are really interesting because they both have opportunities for emission reductions and energy generation opportunities. Think about the Durham York Energy Centre as an example, that can help to, to decarbonize the community more, more broadly. And so we are looking at innovative initiatives, um, like sewer heat, district energy systems in the Port of Whitby area, for example, and that's, that's come to council earlier this year. As well, uh, potential district energy system in the Curtis transit oriented development area is leveraging, uh, regional infrastructure to decarbonize what it will be a mixed-use transit oriented community. Potentially if we can make the business case work.
True. What would you do through your chair in, in, in the case of, um, say a municipality that gets involved in, you know, building social housing, affordable housing? What would you, you know, what would the offset be with respect to that project? Because I mean, in any given year, you could measure a municipality and that then becomes the offset where, you know, the variance is that we had to perform a particular project. I'm sure you're going to be measuring what the, um, the carbon footprint of that project would be in the future. I'm just looking forward and, and sensing that you're not going to stop at just the service provision, but also the, the impact of projects. Um, could you expand on that?
Sure. Yeah, absolutely. Through the chair to you. I mean, when we're talking about municipally owned buildings, social housing, long-term care and the like, you know, we are striving towards building towards higher standards of energy performance. The Beaverton Supportive Housing, uh, project is a great example of that. It's an all-electric facility running on air source heat pumps and solar, et cetera. We'll be talking about the Seaton Long-Term Care Home, I think on this agenda later. So these are examples where the region in terms of new facilities is working towards ensuring that they are eliminate, emitting as little or ideally, uh, no emissions. But as well, we have a, an existing portfolio of facilities, housing, as you mentioned, through the Durham local, Durham Regional Local Housing Corporation, where you're, you're actively developing plans to decarbonize that, that portfolio as well. And it's not just sort of decarbonizing because that doesn't really benefit the residents who are vulnerable or low incomes, seniors in some cases. It's also been installing the, the systems and technologies that allow those vulnerable seniors to be resilient in a future where we've got, you know, extended heat waves of 35, 40 or 45 degree temperatures that are, that can be fatal. And so installing cooling, installing air source heat pumps that allow those vulnerable residents to survive frankly in what's going to be a dramatically altered future is a critical part of our climate adaptation, um, initiatives as well.
So through you Chair, what, what I gathered from this, and I, I think we should all gather is that you're not telling us to stop, you know, um, processing waste or, or for example, water, um, or even large projects. You're just trying to shift our focus towards doing it better. So through you Chair, I guess the last question that I have in understanding that, because there, you know, there, there's a plan and then there's an offset and, and then there's, there's the reality in that, um, as I, I believe, uh, other councillors have mentioned, I think the general public would understand, this is a global picture. We're a small part of it, but we're going to do our part. As, as an element to that, this is, you know, the public sector, the private sector. And I'll give an example, our, our city, um, has a very large industry. What other industries would you consider to be, um, ones in transition that have, you know, that, whether the carbon footprint or the environmental impact that in the past, um, has concerned us? Cause I see a lot of industries working with post-secondary institutions and also new technologies that they own and develop transitioning. So what would you see in the public sector, or sorry, the private sector in our region as being one of the most concerning industries? Aside from St Mary's Cement, which we've mentioned, and we, and then the automotive industry, which everyone sort of recognizes is transitioning as well.
Sure. I'm going to hand that over to Jackie to smart.
So, excuse me, I think it's not just this region specifically, but you, you mentioned cement, steel. And, and I think for all of the, any heavy manufacturing, right? And as well as some of the things that Ian already talked about in terms of heavy emitting industry. I think the important point here is that it's not just about the industry, it's also about end use. So even energy, let's take for example, we're pretty lucky in Ontario, our electricity, you know, right now, it's one of the lowest carbon in the entire world. And a lot of the region, the reason for that is the nuclear plants here in Durham Region. But electricity is 16% of our use, right, um, of energy. We have 72% of our use in Ontario is from oil and gas. And so it's, it's not just thinking about what are the industries that are sitting in your municipality, but also what are the industries that we are all reliant on? How do we first of all, help them to decarbonize? And second, how do we shift our behaviors? Which really then comes back so much to all of the things Ian just talked about in terms of land use planning. Because, and, and making sure, going back to the carrot and stick and our conversation earlier about incentives is, as residents, I think most of us and as users, consumers, uh, whether we be businesses or whether we be residents, we want to do the right thing, but sometimes we don't know what the right thing is or the systems are not yet in place to allow us to do the right thing. So I still have to get into my car unless I want to do a four-time length, additional length of commute to get to certain parts of the region, right? So I still need to get into my car, whether it's electric, which electric is definitely better than, uh, gas, but it still has carbon impact of individuals getting into their cars. So we need to rethink how we're putting things together in a way that doesn't feel like a loss all the time for, for people, whether they're businesses or whether they're residents, but actually feels like just a different way of doing things that is more sustainable for the planet, that gets us where we need to go on the emissions, but also allows us to continue to have a good quality of life, have healthy, resilient communities, be able to address the impacts of climate change and be resilient to them as they, as they happen. And obviously mitigate so that we're pushing them back. And I think that is really where we get to the, the question of, you know, how do we tackle industry? So whether we're looking at hydrogen, as some of us are in the, the region now, we're looking at what is the feasibility of hydrogen adoption? And, and where does it make sense and where does electrification make more sense? But also as we look at those pieces, how do we also change how our communities are structured in a way that doesn't feel like we're taking something away from people, but gives them another way of living and having a good lifestyle? Dan and I, uh, in case you didn't notice, Dr. Hornweg and Jackie Hornweg, we both have the same last name. Our mail comes to the same place and we have a house now near the university. And Dan particularly is really good at walking to work and we're looking at scooters and so on. How do we build communities where people can make those options without really changing, having a significant impact on their life? It's doing those two things while at once. You talked about growth. In, in Canada, we are going to have growth, particularly in the Greater Toronto Area. That's a positive thing, but how do we manage that at the same time? How do we build for that growth in a way that is actually more sustainable? And making sure that our communities of the future will be resilient.
I'm glad you feel that way, um, through your chair. It's a very sensible approach. I feel the same way, um, because the concern, uh, whether it's in this room or in the general public, and it's not from a small element. I think even those who are, um, eager to, you know, ensure that the environment is taken care of, is that, you know, we're, we're not being realistic about some of the implications or at least some of the realities that we're, we're going to be incurring. Steel, you need steel, you need cement and you need the transportation in order to be able to provide for that social housing or that affordable, um, community that you're trying to build. So ultimately, we're just trying to do things better. We're not trying to, um, erase, uh, the, the functions of either the private or the public sector. And, um, I guess I'll, I'll end on the note that it's nice and everything to have folks operating virtually, but I think ultimately, um, I think the pandemic's taught us that operating in an environment like this, transcends maybe some of the considerations when it comes to the carbon footprint. I think ultimately the social impact is something we have to consider too. So on that, I really want to, you know, thank you for the, the presentation. I got a great deal of, um, input and, and feedback from colleagues and also from the presentation. And I thank you for your chair.
Thank you, Mayor Wad.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And through you to Ian and Jackie. I just have one question. Most of my others have been answered. What, um, if any, might be financial implications to roll out, say, the forum? Or, you know, build out the report? And it's great to have all this collaboration and so on with, with everyone, but I'm sure there is cost. Do you folks have any idea what, what might be coming forward to be approved for cost?
Sure. So with the draft agreement that's within the agenda package, you'll see we're proposing a $100,000 annual contribution to, uh, the university to support its ability to fulfill the functions that we're describing here. Production of the report, all the data analysis that goes into it, hosting of the forum, as well as other potential in-year events or workshops that, uh, that are, that are necessary. Of course, this funding will, will support a lot of, uh, student professional development and engagement in this field, which is going to be beneficial. So there'll be a lot of internships and, uh, and whatnot that, that flow from this. But at this point, that's, that is what we're budgeting. It is, will be included in the draft or the preliminary budget for 2023 that, that comes forward, uh, I believe in March. So that, that's, that, that is the proposal right now.
Terrific. Thank you. And, um, I think it's a great, a great plan and I hope that, um, everyone will support the report and move forward. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you councillor Heat.
Thank you through you Chair. Uh, I just want to comment and then a question. I do appreciate for you rolling out and, uh, uh, doing what you're doing because I think this is going to be very, very helpful for all the municipalities in Durham Region. My question is, we often talk about the carbon pricing on gas and so on, so forth. There is a huge, um, gap with, uh, getting EV vehicles to people who actually want it. So if you're talking about collaboration, where are we talking about, uh, getting these vehicles more faster to the end users? And are we talking with our, um, car manufacturing sector locally and beyond of where these vehicles are? How far along are they in terms of manufacturing and getting, uh, to the end users? Cause I, I mean, I, I can tell you in a very personally that I've tried to look for one and I can't find it. And they're years away. So if the federal government is pushing towards bringing all of us to EV, I think the conversation needs to be started. So I'd like to know how we can help with that and that'll be all. Thank you, Chair.
Sure. I can take a crack at that. Through, through the chair to you councillor Shaheed. We, we partnered last year with Plug and Drive to host the EV Experience Roadshow that made stops all around Durham Region. And we're, so we're providing test drive opportunities and the like, um, which was great. And we learned there was a lot of interest and part of that was partnering with the dealerships. We did work with the dealerships all across the region to ensure that they had vehicles in stock for, uh, participants that wanted to take a test drive, but maybe outside of the roadshow that we were hosting and ultimately purchase a vehicle. So that, that, those conversations have happened. But as you rightly point out, if you walk into a dealership today, you're on a waiting list, maybe, maybe 18 months if you're lucky. And so that's a challenge, certainly, and one that we, you know, talking about limited control, no control. Maybe something we don't have a whole lot of control over. The reality is, is that, oh, the, the automotive manufacturers are prioritizing supply to the provinces in which there are vehicle purchase incentives. So in this case, we have British Columbia and Quebec at the provincial level that are offering, uh, purchase incentives on top of the federal, uh, incentive. In Ontario, we don't have that. And so that's a big reason for the, um, the lack of supply in, in, in Ontario. So there could be an opportunity for some advocacy to, to reach out to the province and, and perhaps encourage them to bring back the, uh, purchase incentive that did exist, uh, previously. But no, though that's, I think that's, that's my response, limited control directly, except for working with the dealerships to try and cajole them to bring, uh, models in. But again, it's they, they're prioritizing where, where the demand is and, and, and there's a lot more demand in those other places that I mentioned. Jackie, is there anything you wanted to add to that?
Furthermore, Chair Henry, I, I do agree absolutely. I think there still needs to be conversation on this because they're not 18 months, they're far beyond. And that's exactly what it is in the pricing on it as well. So yes, we all want to help, but that's a huge gap that I see. And that could be something that we can advocate for 100%. And I again, appreciate your answers on that. Thanks. That'll be all.
Thank you.
Thank you councillor McDougal.
Thank you for your presentation through the chair. I do have a question and my question is, is I, I really like the idea of the competition amongst municipalities. And my question was, um, we keep talking about carbon and how much carbon we're using. Will we also be discussing in terms of the competition, in terms of how much carbon we're sequestering? So in terms of a municipal balance sheet, so we'll compare, say, Brock to Pickering or Ajax just to say, okay, well, when you look at the land mass area of Brock, they use this much carbon. And you look at the municipalities down along the lake, they use this much carbon. Will that be part of this as well?
Great. So through, through the chair to you, as I understand it, you're asking about the, uh, potential carbon sequestration in agriculture, natural systems and the like, that would be theoretically higher, most, most certainly higher in, in places that are less, uh, urbanized. So I mean, there are methodologies to estimate, uh, carbon s- 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 sequestration in natural and agricultural systems. I think yes, we should look to include those to the extent that they are, um, you know, can be validated in terms of their, um, you know, uh, accuracy. So that's a great, great piece of feedback that I think we'll take, take back to the team as we develop the methodologies and, and see how we can incorporate that, uh, that piece.
And then if I might, through you, Mr. Chair, a question I have is the, um, the plan, I'm, I'm just wondering, we were talking about what we can do locally, which I think is really important because most importantly is, you know, you look in the mirror and say, what can I do? Like, yes, I could have rode my bike here today, but I didn't. But when I look beyond Durham, you know, we're a bit myopic in this term of hub and spoke modeling for transportation. So in Skugog, for example, with the growth in Lindsay, Peterborough and Millbrook, I've seen an explosion, the amount of traffic that's coming through Skugog, through the Green Belt to get to greener pastures for work in the morning. What sort of, what sort of bolstering of those transportation networks will we be looking at? Say for instance, the removal of the GO service from Skugog that goes up through Brock, was an interregional service, had it had been intra-regional and went, went beyond Durham Region, it may still have been in place. Through you, Mr. Chair.
I might look to Elaine and perhaps, uh, my colleague, uh, General Manager Bill Holmes to speak to that if I may in terms of transit in the north, if that's.
Perhaps I can start and turn it over to Bill. Yes, uh, GO did remove that service. And I think you are probably right, had it crossed, uh, regional boundaries, it may well still be in place. With respect to what DRT is doing to, uh, With respect to what DRT is doing to address the gap that that has made, I would like to turn it over to General Manager Holmes. But we do continue to advocate strongly to improve transit services across the region and across the GTHA. And you'll be hearing next from MetroLinks on that, one of our biggest projects to date. So, Bill, could you add to that at all?
Yes, thank you. And through the Chair, as you know, we currently have transit service available to all residents in the region. Prior to the pandemic, we did have some interregional on-demand routes to Lindsay, Orellia, and also into York. Ridership at that time was low, and and with the pandemic, we we did pull those back. However, we do continue to take a look at transportation corridors and where people are traveling and continue to evaluate those options for future service to those communities as that transportation is continuing. So we continue to evaluate those on a year-to-year basis. We are adding additional resources to the northern communities to further support, extension, and expansion of on-demand for all residents. And we'll, again, we'll look at those interregional transportation hubs in the years to follow. Thank you.
Thank you, that's all, Mr. Chair, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Dice.
Thank you. You mentioned Plug and Drive, and it reminded me, there was always a concern that in the dealerships, there weren't any EVs that they could test drive or look at. And they were working on at the time some sort of showroom that would hold all the different electric vehicles in one spot so people can go and have a look. Did that happen? I haven't heard.
Through the Chair to you, so the Plug and Drive has what they call the EV Discovery Center. It was in North York. They've recently moved and are actually looking for a permanent home in the GTA. They have reached out to us, and through our economic development team, we are working to identify potential sites for Plug and Drive in their EV Discovery Center within Durham region, potentially as early as sometime in 2023. If we can find, we can work with them to find a suitable space. So that would provide that opportunity for a a bricks and mortar spot for someone to come and and be sure that there would be a vehicle for them to to test drive. Plug and Drive partners with a lot of the auto manufacturers. They have a range of models in in stock. And of course, then there's no sales pressure for one model versus the other. So it's a bit more of a comfortable experience for the for the participant in terms of the sales tactics, if you will.
Well, that that's good to know, and I hope we do, we're able to find something for them here in Durham region because it's very popular now. It's one of the things that the average citizen knows they can do, and they're looking towards that. But as has been expressed, it's it's very difficult to find these cars and actually test drive them. And we did do that with the Plug and Drive Roadshow, which was really very successful. Thank you.
I think Jackie would like to add something.
I was just going to say, I think you've given me an idea, which is maybe we should have a BEI Plug and Drive Partnership Day where we bring them to Durham region with their cars so that we can invite the public to come and do that. So thank you for the idea, and I think that also speaks to the whole point of this, which is that, you know, together we can do more. And even as you're talking about the interdependencies that Counselor McDougal was referencing, there are things that, as a region, you have some levers. But then there are some levers that, first of all, having a report like this gives because it shows, it brings visibility to the data to allow for that broader discussion. But it also allows for other partners in this to perhaps take a role in championing things that they can do in a different way than the region can do. So that's another thought. Thank you.
Thank you, that exhausts the speaker. Almost exhausted the speaker's list. Counselor Yimad.
Thank you, and thank you for the presentation. Just a couple of questions in terms of the mandate. When we talk about track progress toward GHG targets and promote transparency, can you sort of elaborate on what you mean in terms of promoting transparency?
Sure, so through through the Chair to you. The region has established a greenhouse gas target for the corporation as well as the community. Local municipalities, including WHIP, have also established targets for greenhouse gas emissions in the community. We don't yet have a mechanism to, you know, in a consistent manner, account for emissions on a on an annual basis and provide a lens in terms of how progress is is being made along that low-carbon pathway. And so that's that's really the idea, is to provide transparency for council and for the community at large in terms of how we're doing relative to the to the commitments that have been made or the or the targets that have been set.
And you're, I guess, the the last point in terms of the mandate, to provide ongoing long-term support for climate action that spans electoral cycles and variations and public awareness and business support. Can you sort of elaborate on that?
Sure, so the the idea is that this roundtable is going to meet, you know, regularly, define priorities that then get implemented through staff level working groups. And so that direction, you know, I think the idea is that it is, you know, we're implementing working plans over multi-year cycles, integrating initiatives into our into our budgets and our and our capital plans, ten-year, five, ten-year capital plans that then span electoral cycles, such that we're not having this, you know, necessarily as sort of, you know, herky-jerky kind of changing in direction all the time. We're trying to mainstream this into business planning, policy, capital plans, asset management, and the like.
Thank you. And my last question, with the change in provincial policy in terms of housing, how do you feel that we are best suited to achieve our GHG targets?
Through the Chair to you, Counselor Yimad, I would say, you know, the focus on building transit-oriented communities that are connected to infrastructure. So we look at the major transit station area policies with the Curtis Transit Area Development and other areas around the new GO stations, trying to concentrate where we can in terms of building within those areas and within existing communities where there where there are opportunities for transit, active transit. That's that's going to be the lowest cost, lowest hanging fruit in terms of emission reduction opportunities.
So I guess, looking at the transit-oriented development that that we've been working through and the ideas coming out through the envisioned Durham process, do you feel that, you know, if we've got a thousand meters as sort of a walkable span from a condo, let's say, to a GO station, would you even suggest to, would there be a suggestion maybe to expand that even further? Like, maybe fifteen hundred meters or so, so, you know, we can have a larger area for transit-oriented development if there is more space to build more higher-density products?
Yeah, certainly, there's a whole revolution in mobility that is happening. And, you know, walkability is one thing, but as we move into e-mobility with the scooters and the e-bikes, that range of how far you can be from a a high-order transit station is is extending out, such that I think there are opportunities to look at, you know, wider realm of transit-oriented development or what what constitutes a transit-oriented community. As well, of course, Durham Durham region transit, we had the the auto Autonomy Vehicle Pilot to get people to the WHIP GO station. So looking at, there's a lot of innovation in technology that's going to enable us to really extend the sphere of what constitutes a transit-oriented community moving forward. So it's really an exciting space as we as we move forward.
Thank you, thank you for the presentation. Thank you, Chair.
Okay, thank you, that exhausts the chat box. Thank you very much. Members of council, this was a great debate, but the issue that we were talking about was governance. And we got outside of what the purpose of the questions were. So just to enlighten all members of council, that if I feel that you're going in a wrong direction, even though the debate is appropriate, not appropriate this time, but maybe down the road, I'm going to interrupt you. Otherwise, we will be here till the very early hours, very early hours of the morning. So thank you. My intention, members of council, and thank you for your presentation. Members of council, we'll take and we'll do the next presentation. And the intention then will be to break for lunch for an hour. At this. Maybe maybe we're maybe we should break for lunch now. So we'll move on to to presentation five point two. Miss Jake Shabas, Head Sponsor of the GO Expansion and Regis. Kita Powell, Vice President, Community Engagement on behalf of MetroLinks. And Mr. Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The presenters could press the request to speak button in the center of their screen. You should appear on monitoring, your microphone should activate.
Good. Thank you. Through you, can you can you hear me now, please?
Yes, we can. I believe it's Jake.
Yes, through you, Chair. I'd like to thank yourself and members of the committee of the whole for the opportunity to speak with you today. Good morning, everyone. My name is Jake Shabas. I'm the Vice President, Head Sponsor for GO Rail and Up Express. I'm very happy to speak to you today about one of our most exciting projects, the Bowmanville Extension, a twenty-kilometer railway extending the Lake Shore East Corridor through into central Oshawa, Curtis, and Bowmanville. If you could advance the slide, please. This project fulfills longstanding plans within municipal and provincial growth plans, and it's reflected in a very strong business case. Nearly five million annual boardings are forecast by 2041, and more than half a billion dollars of economic benefits are generated over the project's lifecycle. This is really a result of the travel time savings that this project proposes to residents of Durham region, with up to fifteen minutes of travel time savings for travelers from Bowmanville. I think I would note, I was able to catch some of the last presentation. And I would think, in addition, this really speaks to one of the initiatives we see to help you achieve your GHG reduction targets. And really, this is also a regional goal of ours at MetroLinks. So it's a very timely, timely follow-up to the previous presentation. Next slide, please. So as we were just discussing, we have four stations planned on this extension. The first station, Thornton's Corners East, near Thornton Road and Gibb Street in Oshawa, Ritson Road, near Ritson Road and Olive Street in Oshawa, Curtis Station, near Curtis Road, just north of Baseline Road in in Curtis, and finally, Bowman Station, near Bowmanville Avenue and King Street West in Bowmanville. These four stations are really where where customers and passengers will be accessing this extension. So they're obviously a critical part of this project. We also do plan to to have an additional four to five thousand parking spaces proposed to be added at these stations. We know that parking pre-COVID and today continues to be a challenge for customers trying to access our our Lake Shore East services. So one clear benefit of this project is to to provide that additional relief valve for people looking to access the Lake Shore East Line. Bowmanville Station will also create a new transfer point for bus services coming from Peterborough, improving the connectivity between Clarrington, Oshawa, and the downtown part of the GTHA in downtown Toronto. So this is really about a regional network being created through the the region of Durham. You can also see on this map a dotted line for the Durham Scarborough BRT, which is also a part of our plan. So we are looking at this from a network perspective of how do we strengthen the overall transportation network in Durham region to provide people with those opportunities for improved travel. Next slide, please. In February of 2020, we published on our website an initial business case for the Bowmanville Extension, showing the use of Canadian Pacific Railway's Belleville subdivision, which runs through central Oshawa, and its GM spur line, which crosses the 401 to connect to what we've renamed the Durham College Oshawa GO Station on the Lake Shore East Line. Further, the four stations on the extension are now to be delivered as part of MetroLinks' Transit-Oriented Communities Program in partnership with the region of Durham. This is consistent with all new MetroLinks GO stations, which are being delivered in partnership with third parties to ensure that we have that integration of the land use surrounding our stations, which both supports improved ridership, but also supports those reductions in GHGs and just improves the convenience and overall use of the service. Next slide, please. Since that time, a preliminary design business case was published, recommending that we move forward with the procurement and construction of the Bowmanville Extension to bring two-way all-day service to Bowmanville. You can see a schematic on the right of the preferred service pattern that was tested in that preliminary design business case. This included two express trains every rush hour and one train every hour in the off-peak and during the rush hours in the in the counter-peak direction. And on weekends, one train every two hours. Following the announcement that the GM Oshawa plant was to reopen, we worked with CP Railway to agree to to include an independent span across the Highway 401 to ensure that CP could continue to offer service to the GM plant and that GO trains would not have to share service with Canadian Pacific Railway's freight trains. More information on this is coming in the next slide. You could advance the slide, please. So as I mentioned, the the project scope for the Bowmanville Extension includes the construction of new track and signal work and a new rail alignment over Highway 401. In addition, some grade separation works, bridge reconstructions, modifications to existing bridges, and upgrade crossings. It really is a transformative project that is making use of an existing right-of-way that is used by CP Railway to transform, we would think, mobility in in Durham region. On this slide, you can see the existing GM spur that CP Railway owns at the bottom in that in that image. This line is immediately to the east of Oshawa GO Station. So the spur is first passing over the existing railway corridor in the bottom right of the screen, and then it then crosses over Highway 401 in the in the in the top part of that image. I'm sure you have seen this if you have traveled on on Highway 401. The schematic at the top of your screen is showing the GM spur and a new track that are completely separate from one another. This separation is critical for MetroLinks' ability, not only to make sure that we run a reliable service that is not impacted by by freight trains who run on a different schedule and have a different type of operation, but it's also critical such that we have the flexibility to modify and increase our service beyond that opening day agreement. So the fact that we are ensuring that that GO and CP Railway are completely separate in this new alignment is a critical part of this project and is a very important characteristic for for MetroLinks. Next slide, please. We really are moving full speed ahead on on this project. Design work for the entire project is nearly at fifty percent, a significant milestone for us, which we will be achieving in Q1 of next year. This includes some geotechnical work, which is a critical preliminary step for getting shovels in the ground for this project as soon as possible. In addition, we are preparing for an addendum to the environmental project report to reflect some of those alignment changes that I just mentioned on the on the previous slide. I'd also like to highlight to to the council of the whole that we have chosen to use a construction manager at-risk model for this for this project. The way that this works is a construction manager comes on board in the design stage prior to having completed the design so that they can assist directly with early problem solving, reduce the potential for risks in the construction stage, and really help us optimize and innovate as it relates to aligning the construction phasing with the design of the project itself. Near the end of the design phase, the contractor will provide an estimated construction schedule and associated costs for the proposed works, at which time MetroLinks and the contractor would negotiate terms of a construction contract, including a price for that work. Our request for proposals for a construction manager closed in October of this year, and we had very strong market interest, which is a real sign of the the strength of of what we have released so far and the design work done to date. We plan on awarding this contract by spring of next year, at which point we will kick off a development phase to finalize that design work, land on the construction staging and bundling of the works. I will now turn it over to Raj Katarpal, our Vice President of Community Engagement, to share more details on the community engagement and communication plans to support the environmental project report addendum. Raj?
Thank you, Jake, and good morning, Chair, and members of the committee of the whole. We can stay on that previous slide. I don't have any other additional slides. Thank you. Thanks for having us here this morning. As Jake mentioned, technical studies for the EPR addendum are underway as MetroLinks has been advancing the design of the project following the completion of the 2011 EPR. We do have a dedicated community engagement team for Durham region, and they will be sure to continue to provide more information on all of our projects. will be sure to continue to provide more information on all of our projects through various channels, including Bowmanville Extension. A little bit of a plug for our team, they can be reached at duramregion@metrolinks.com. In the more near term, to support the EPR addendum work that we've mentioned for Bowmanville Extension, we will be hosting virtual public information centers in early 2023, along with a virtual live session. We will be using a multi-channel approach to promote the upcoming engagements, to ensure the community and stakeholders, and of course yourselves, are aware of the consultation period, and that you have an opportunity to provide your feedback and ask us any questions. Our multi-channel approach to promote the engagement will be through web, social, newspapers, Canada Post, newsletters, and community pop-ups. And of course, we'll be partnering with our municipal communications colleagues to share through their respective communication channels. Our teams will also stay connected with all elected officials, providing them with regular updates. So, I'm happy to pause there, that's the end of our presentation, and back to you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. First in the speakers is Counselor Brenner.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I've got a couple of questions, if I might, through you to our delegation, and it's tied to engagement, not specifically to just this aspect of the development along the Bowmanville Line expansion, but engagement that takes us to that, if I might, Mr. Chairman, through you.
Go ahead, please.
Thank you. I have a couple of questions. The first one is, with everything that's been happening in the city of Toronto currently with the crosstown boondoggle, what assurances do we have that we're not going to find ourselves in the same kind of a situation, given the need and the priority for this specific expansion that the community has been waiting for a long time?
Through you, Chair Henry. Thank you very much, Regional Counselor Brenner, for your question. Hi, is my camera on?
Yep. Go ahead, please.
Yes, it's a very good question. As you can see, there's a lot of attention rightly being paid to ensuring that the crosstown project is brought to fruition and implementation as soon as possible. Part of the main difference here between this project and the projects you've referenced is the procurement model, this construction manager at risk model, where we bring in the contractor at an early phase to help us finish the design, work through that design, as well as the construction phasing. Work through the construction phasing with them at the table prior to letting the construction contracts, to letting them and then starting that construction. So, this is really all about de-risking the construction schedule and the implementation of the service. So, we really do think that this procurement model is a much more collaborative and progressive type of approach that's appropriate for this kind of project, that we hope de-risks the project in a way that will perhaps let us learn from what's going on in the city of Toronto.
Second question that I have, you touched on the, I believe, the express service as well as part of the key component to this expansion. Currently, there are concerns that MetroLink has not yet returned to an express train service model to service the eastern part of the GTA, which is here in Durham Region from Toronto. And when can we expect that that will be addressed and corrected?
Through you, Chair Henry. Thank you, Regional Counselor Brenner, for the question. We are still in our post-COVID recovery mode, where we are bringing back those services that we had pre-COVID. So, we are constantly monitoring ridership trends to see those customers and that demand come back. We know that express services are a critical service provided to, in particular, customers from the Durham region. So, we continue to monitor those services and to see what the right timing is to bring those back. But at this point, they are still currently not back in place, as you mentioned. So, you know, we can take that away and perhaps bring you back some estimated timeframes, if I can connect with my planning colleagues.
I think the key part would be that when you take it away and talk to your colleagues about it, about this, bear in mind that it is the community that is raising this through their elected officials, and it's something that we're not in a position to answer that question. There are some of the kinds of questions that the community are having. Our DIT, Durham Regional Trend, does an amazing job being able to coordinate and cooperate with you, but at the same time, there are programs, there are problems in terms of logistics that are taking place, where there's delays on your system that impact the customers on our system, and some of the customers find themselves literally waiting out in the cold. Do you have any ideas on how your engagement team might be able to help assist to better communicate with your delays, to better coordinate, to avoid delays at our end?
Maybe Jake can take that one if you'd like. Through, Mr. Chair, and thank you for the question, Regional Counselor. So, MetroLink's in Durham Region Transit, we maintain effective communications, and we do endeavor to provide convenient planned connections between rail and bus to support our shared passenger. So, something that we're acutely aware of. We're going to continue that dialogue and to do as much preparatory advanced work to ensure that, you know what, the customer journey and the customer experience is kind of at the forefront. You know, across our network and our systems, you know, we work with our partners, and we are all responding to travel, changing travel patterns, and aligning services accordingly. We know that, you know, coordination of these services is even more important through this ridership recovery phase, because there was a lot of unknowns, and we're, you know, as Jake mentioned, we're adding more service, you know, where we can, when we can, based on kind of where the need is. But we remain committed to working with the RT and our partners to ensure that it's, you know, more of a seamless customer journey, and folks aren't standing out in the cold.
One final question, Mr. Chairman, through you, if I might, and that's another question that, you know, had been asked from some members of the public. Where in fact, that you're not able to meet your set, I guess, your set targets in terms of reliability, arrivals, and as a result, that there is disruption in terms of the being able to link up with transit systems along the way, are there any, I guess, precautions that you're looking at in terms of accountability for those types of failures when it does happen, or some type of a give back to the community, who are your customers on the system, as a result of things that are outside of their control, but might be in your control?
Through you, Chair Henry. Thank you for the question, Regional Counselor Brenner. I think we can absolutely take that back to our colleagues. We do offer, in some cases, refunds, depending on the cause and the degree of lateness of a train. So, I think your question is a natural extension of if there was some other type of issue in our service that led to a significant delay faced by a customer, that we should be considering these kinds of options, and then what the fallback precautionary measures are that we can take. So, we will absolutely take that back and consult with our colleagues to see what can be done.
In following up on any of the things that you're taking back, would you be able to reach out and communicate back to us through our DRT, through our DRT executive? That way we'd get feedback, if that's okay.
Yes, I think that shouldn't be a problem.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Kirk.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just have two questions, and these are the ones that are trembling on the lips of Oshawa residents. When do you anticipate the, and not just the Oshawa stations, because this goes right through to Bowmanville, but when do you anticipate the opening of the stations for service? And the other question is, I talked to a CP Rail Police Sergeant on site on the north side last week, and he seemed to be of the opinion the station was going to be built on the north side of the tracks, immediately south of Cowan Park on an old CP rail yard. So, those are the two questions, and I am eagerly anticipating your response. Thank you.
Through you, Chair Henry. Thank you, Regional Counselor Kirk, for your question. In relation to the timeframe, so, we are currently still in a procurement phase, where we are bringing on our construction manager, who is being brought on really for the sole purpose of helping us to develop and optimize an efficient construction schedule that would provide us with the timeframe for exactly when the project would be complete. So, at this time, we are not able to share an opening date estimate, but that is one of the key deliverables of our construction manager that we look forward to bringing back to you. We know how critical the service is. We know how longstanding of a plan this is, and how excited your residents are. So, we are looking forward to sharing that information as well, but at this time, we do not have a date.
So, you wouldn't venture a ballpark number at this particular point in time? Something that people can have a Merry Christmas with? That's all I'm looking for. All right, I'll let that one sit. But I would certainly look forward to any updates as soon as you have, and thank you very much, Jake. The other question relates to the location. So, I was a little puzzled to hear the CP Rail Police Sergeant comment. I'd always thought it was going to be built on the south side because of the bus terminal, the 401 traffic access, and so forth. Could you kindly clear that up for us, please?
Happy to jump in on the station question. Thank you very much. And through you, Mr. Chair, and to Regional Counselor Kirk, the locations are generally fixed through the IBC that was published for where the trains can stop. How they actually become developed is part of the TOC, the Transit Oriented Communities Market Driven Model, and how we work with the adjacent landowners, developers, and of course, with regional staff on how they come together physically. So, at this time, we have ideas. MetroLink owns properties on how the stations could be developed in the very specific locations, but some of that is subject to change as well. And we're looking forward to bringing back that update when more material comes forward.
Thank you. So, another definite maybe. So, thank you very much for that, and I'll certainly look forward to both updates at the appropriate time. Thanks, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Counselor Mayor Piatry.
Thank you, Chair. Along the same line of questioning as Counselor Kirk, specific to timelines, I'm not going to press you for the specific, you know, shovel sort of turning, sawdust turning of the actual extension. But I would like to know a little bit more about what you indicated as being the trajectory, so that we've got project management and different sort of tenders that have already been let, or at least in the process of being let. Can you expand on, you know, what that looks like, so that at least we can, you know, understand the expansion to be a reality, and forgive us for saying that, or at least me for saying that, but there are a lot of announcements, and we want to make sure that there is an understanding that the project is moving forward, considering it's a very important one for the region.
Through you, Chair Henry. Thank you for the question, Regional Counselor. We, I guess what I can share is, in October of 2022 this year, we did close on RRFP, so that is really a firm part of our dates. It's one of our key milestones for implementing this project. In spring of next year, we will award, so we currently have a shortlisted number of construction managers, so we will award a winning construction manager in spring of 2023, at which point we will kick off a development phase. So, that development phase will likely take around 18 months, where effectively we finalize the designs, the construction phasing, and the bundling of the works, and then we begin awarding the contracts. Some contracts could actually be awarded during that development phase. We would be looking to, you know, to time things in the most efficient way possible, but effectively, the key milestones for us are those procurement dates, the October date, which we've now passed, and then the spring date, which is upcoming. I think in addition, I would remind that we have achieved the 50% design, or we are about to achieve the 50% design milestone in early 2023. So, we do anticipate getting to around 70% by fall of 2023, and completing the environmental project report as well in the fall of 2023. So, this project is very much up and running. You know, we are in a very sophisticated state of development as it relates to design and approvals and procurement. So, that, and I would also flag that we have all of our business cases published online. We're trying to be as transparent as possible as we can with what the scope of the project is, and we hope that that helps build confidence that this is happening.
I appreciate that. Through you, Chair, the environmental assessment that you talked about potentially being part of the 50% to 70% phase that you're looking at moving forward with, would that not have been largely taken care of as a result of the extension being, the extension that we chose? Or did you have to go back and do a separate EA? Has there been anything that's impacted the EA negatively thus far?
Yes. Through you, Chair Henry. So, we do have an existing environmental project report with all of our approvals in place. However, the change in the alignment, in particular, the new span over Highway 401, as well as some smaller modifications on the, within the alignment through CP Belleville subdivision, those, in addition to the timeframes for when the original environmental project report was published, those are what is spurring the need to do this addendum. However, this addendum, we don't anticipate taking an enormous amount of time, but we want to make sure that we do it thoroughly, we engage the public on it, so that this project continues moving forward.
Just to complete the line of questioning through you, Chair, 100% sort of design factor that we're going to be hopefully moving towards, are you looking at, because this is all 2023, you're looking at 2024. And then I have a separate question that relates to risk that you highlighted in some of the projects in Toronto. I mean, between the environmental assessment that you're completing, and I know that you've got a couple of variables, and the, and I guess the 100% design phase, would you not suggest that some of the challenges that we have here in Durham are much less or much different than the ones that were incurred in Toronto, and therefore, the path forward is a lot more convenient for MetroLink at this point?
Now, thank you for the question. Through you, Chair. In regards to your first question about the design and achieving 100%, different elements of the project will achieve 100% design at different times. So, part of bringing on the construction manager is to really focus on what elements can we begin construction on earlier, therefore, what can we prioritize in terms of completing the design work. So, all of that is going to be taking place in 2023. However, the development phase itself, to bring every element to 100%, that will extend into 2024, but that doesn't necessarily mean that construction will not start until 2024. As it relates to your second question, I would agree with you entirely. This is quite a different project than the Auckland Crosstown, which is a greenfield project. This is an extension of an existing railway that is already in service. We already use the fleet that would be operating on the Bowmanville Extension. So, you know, from a complexity and a risk perspective, it's quite a different type of project. And so, you know, we do hope that, in combination with the procurement model we've chosen, are going to really reduce those risks.
Okay, appreciate that. Through you, Chair. I guess the follow-up with respect to risk is, it may not be the elephant in the room, it just may be the way I think. Is MetroLink prepared to move forward with stations, regardless of whether there's a partnership with, say, for example, a developer, or whatever the consideration will be moving towards the 100% factor in terms of the design?
Thank you for the question, and through you, Chair, to Regional Counselor. At this time, all new stations in the GO network are being delivered through the Transit Oriented Communities Program. So, we are actively working forward through partnerships to deliver the stations. That is the mandate. We believe there's significant value in that. There's a great deal of interest. We're very excited about these opportunities. We have a very dedicated team to this project, working very closely, with Jake's team, of course, in the alignment.
Okay. In respect to that, through you, Chair, would that not be a risk hypothetically, if the environment changes with, you know, the potential of a partner? What then becomes the play for MetroLink?
I'll have our CAO respond.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair, we are working closely with MetroLink, and we are planning a council education session in January, a half day where we will go through the proposed station strategy, whether it be through the Trans Oriented Communities Office or in partnership with the region. So, you'll be receiving much more information on that in the new year. At present, we're just assessing the possible impact of Bill 23 on the strategy. Thank you.
I appreciate that. Through Chair, I guess this is just a comment more than a question, and that is- I guess this is just a comment more more than a question, and that is I wouldn't want us to um, you know, to to fail the project or for the project to fail us uh based on uh the choice of partnerships. Because economic circumstances change and partnerships then end up changing as well. So I'd like us to have, either as a council or as a corporation, uh an understanding of what the um uh the risk management would be in that and essentially a strategy to be able to execute um outside of that partnership, providing um, you know, the the unlikelihood, hopefully, that those partnerships uh could uh could may not be as adequate as maybe um our considerations or our strategy currently is. So on that basis, I just wanted to thank you and wish you happy holidays through you, Chair. And um I appreciate the opportunity to ask those questions.
Counselor Wu.
Yeah, through the chair, and thank you very much for your presentation. Um one of the, I guess, integral parts in all of this is the delivering more of market-driven strategy to delivering transit infrastructure. Could you give me or give us an idea of the response back from land developers? And I think um uh their involvement would be at Thornton, the Nob Hill Farms uh location, Curtis and Bowmanville, to build the infrastructure in those locations?
Thank you for the question and and through you, Chair, to you, Regional Counselor. Uh it it it's a great question. The nature of conversations is, of course, commercially confidential. But I can say that we have had interest in all of the stations, and we are in active discussions. We're also moving forward with a strategic conservation plan. I think many are familiar with the existing building on the five hundred Howard property that Metro Links owns, and moving forward with that in a responsible way that uh, you know, multiple levels of government are supportive of and how that could potentially transform that site into a station site. So I can say that there are positive conversations. We are um very excited about the level of interest and how things are moving forward. I can't speak to specific responses at this time.
Okay, thank you. Within the slide, uh there was uh, I think, parking spaces. And can you give me an idea again or give us an idea again what you're anticipating for uh parking spaces? And that's that for all four locations.
Thank you for the question and through you, Mr. Chair. Uh parking at this time is, of course, anticipated depending on the need and the ridership projections within the business cases. At this time, the distribution of parking um is dependent on that. So we anticipate higher levels of parking requirement uh further east as it's more end of line. But we are also, through the Transit Oriented Communities Program, looking at parking more um progressively as a flexible model, ways that we can bring more people closer to stations. For us, this is about ridership. Um Jake mentioned, and there was a great presentation earlier around sustainability, and so how we can support that. And in the future, look at ways of reducing parking, of finding more efficient ways, more energy-efficient ways to bring people to stations will be the focus. So um the parking distribution isn't necessarily even. But as I said, it's heavily weighted in the east to ensure we can get people onto the service, uh but also in a manner that's flexible for the future.
Okay, when you're looking at east, and that would be certainly Clarrington. Uh the Curtis location may be able to, depending on the amount of land, but certainly when you get to the Bowmanville hub, uh parking may be stretched. That uh is there parking garage just contemplated?
At this time, we're flexible about the model. Part of how we determine the design of the infrastructure and the actual nature of the infrastructure is part of the partnership piece and that we want to protect for that for the future. So we're very aware that a parking garage um can stack parking, but it does create a permanent uh asset or infrastructure piece on a property. So where we can leave that flexibility open, we want to do that. In some cases, the parking structure might be more efficient. So I can't give you a concrete answer today as we're still in this development phase. Uh but it's something we're actively thinking about with both sides of that coin.
Okay. Now, in the earlier stages and and moving over to the CP line, um now, is the CP line looking at being electrified? Part of your electrification pro uh go go forward?
All right, I can take this, Regional Counselor Wu. So currently, no, we are we are not including electrification in this scope at this time.
Okay, now, how does that affect as far as uh you'll be using uh diesel trains? Does that mean that our uh ridership will have to switch over in Oshawa to a train that's electrified?
Uh thank you for the question. It it's a very good one. Uh no, the simple answer is no. We would anticipate that there will still always be um some diesel trains uh on the Lake Shore East Line. We also have Via Rail who operates on this corridor. So those diesel trains um would be running right into Union Station. So the there is no current plan for a for a transfer point where you'd have to switch from one train to another. You'd still have a direct service into Union Station.
Okay. And I know my colleagues from Oshawa are anxious to get a deadline. Um and certainly uh our residents in Clarrington and our uh Clarrington councillors. So is there a way that we can anticipate that the uh GO train will uh come into Bowmanville before Oshawa? No, I'm just kidding. I'm just wondering how many people are listening. But thank you very much. I appreciate your presentation.
Thank you, Counselor Wu. Counselor McCahey.
Thank you. Through you, Chair Henry. Uh thank you for the presentation. Just briefly, uh when we start talking about the uh parking, do we have um an estimation on the existing users that would be transferred to the most eastern stops? As we look at Whippy and and the volume of of parking that we have there, uh we're assuming then that a lot of it will be picked up in Oshawa and Clarrington and and from users further east. Have you data collected off of plates to know what the percentage of that uh pressure will be taken off?
Uh through you, Chair Henry. Thank you for the question, Regional Counselor. Um okay, we do have uh we do have data as part of the planning studies and the business case work that was done. I do not have those figures at my fingertips, but we're happy to take that away and give you a sense of um the abstraction. Uh we do know that obviously by extending the 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 service further to the east for those passengers that are coming from the east, you know, many of those uh those customers will be stopping at the new stations and boarding there. So that will hopefully provide a little bit of relief to those downstream stations. So we'll take that away and uh and and look at what data we have available.
Thank you. I would appreciate that. Thank you. That's all.
Thank you, uh Counselor Crawford.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. Uh thank you for your presentation, and this is good news for our uh most easterly customers. Um as far as the express uh train that was taken away in twenty twenty one, my understanding is it's not going to be returning until twenty twenty four. Is that correct?
Uh through you, Chair. Thank you for the question, Regional Counselor Crawford. So, you know, part of the uh part of the constraint that is driving the the removal of that express train is the significant amount of construction works that are happening on the Lake Shore East Corridor just to the east of Union Station. This includes work for the Ontario Line as well as work to expand the capacity of the of the Lake Shore East Corridor. So right now, um you know, we're constantly monitoring um how that construction is progressing. We do hope to bring those express trains back as soon as possible. But currently, it is really the construction that is impairing the ability to have that extra service come back. So the moment we do have um firm timelines for that, we will absolutely be bringing that back and and communicating that with you.
Thank you. Um I know you you talk about public consultation, and I think you honestly really try to do public consultation. However, there is a public consultation today in the McLean Center at ten o'clock that we simply found out about yesterday. So a little bit more lead time on your public consultation would really be helpful because, and it's at ten o'clock in the morning when most of the people in that I represent are on the train or have been on the train and are at work. So that whatever you're talking about is going to directly affect them, and they are unable to even attend those. So a perhaps more of a a focus on pub- public consultation at the time when the public can be there would be extremely helpful because these are really things that, if we want to continue to add ridership to the GO train, things like uh, you know, le- losing an express bus or talking about BTR plans and all those kinds of things that are happening right now in our region is really critical to have people be able to attend these and be able to give honest feedback back. So just my comments. Thank you.
Counselor Neil.
Yeah, we had a public consultation yesterday at Legend Centre, Army at Downton. It was quite packed. So thank you. That was yesterday uh early afternoon when I was there. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk, that exhausts the speakers list. Uh to the team from Metro Links, thank you very much for your delegation today.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Uh members of council, it's now eleven fifty one. I will look for a break for lunch. Could I get a mover and a suggestion of time?
One o'clock.
Okay. One o'clock, moved by Counselor Chapman, seconded by Counselor Leahy on taking a recess till one o'clock. We'll call the vote. All those in favor? In opposition? Seeing none that carries. We'll see you all back in the chambers at one o'clock. Thank you. Good afternoon, members of council. Mr. Clerk, uh I will call for a roll call, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. An electronic roll call will now be held.
Okay, we we have corn. Does does a member of council need to correct the the roll? Did somebody go no when they're in the room and should have voted yes? So not not put it. So so not to put anybody on the spot if the clerks identified it. Um so no names are mentioned. How's that? Uh, members of council, we'll move on to item five point three. Lane Baxter-Treher, Chief Administrative Officer, Nancy Taylor, Commissioner of Finance, and Brian Bridgman, Commissioner of Planning and Economic Development, on the implications of Bill twenty three.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. If we could uh just move to the front slide, or the first slide, rather. Uh what we're going to do today is uh walk you through uh what the region has been doing to enable housing. Uh we'll start by discussing the regional the region council role in enabling housing and the state of development in the region. We'll introduce Bill twenty three, uh talk about the bill's implementation, and then we'll talk about impacts of the bill specifically on planning and development charges. Uh detailed analysis of financial impacts will be presented by Commissioner Taylor. Commissioner Bridgman will present the planning in uh comments, and then we'll give you additional uh concerns. I should point out, as many of you know, that this uh legislation has been moving very quickly. Uh so we are, we continue our analysis. We have a number of questions around the impact on our DC bylaw that we are trying to work through with the province. So there will very definitely be updated information on the financial impacts in January of the new year. Next slide, please. So as you know, that there are many services and supports that the region Regional Council oversees that effectively enable housing to be developed across the region. Uh the slide summarizes what these are. They include the Regional Official Plan, which is the guiding document to plan and coordinate growth across the region. The region builds and operates water and sewer infrastructure. We have a council-approved long-term waste management plan. The region builds and operates social housing to support our most vulnerable population. And council has approved the creation of Transit Oriented Development Office to advance rapid transit projects and the creation of Transit Oriented Mixed Income Communities. Durham Regional Police Services and the region of Durham Paramedic Services uh enhance operations to support growing communities. And Durham Regional Transit extends transit services to new development and evaluates services to support increased ridership in growth areas. Council oversees the construction and maintenance of regional roads that connect communities, and the region leads sustainability programs and initiatives that deliver on resident sustainability goals. And we heard a lot about that this morning. The Economic Development Team supports the business and innovation communities across the region and helps to build sustainable compete communities. Next slide, please. Regional Council has been planning for growth for a number of years. As part of the envisioned Durham process earlier this fall, staff released draft settlement area boundary expansions, which have been released for review and comment. This map on the screen uh shows the draft settlement area boundary expansions that were put together by the planning team. The next step will be to present a draft official plan for consultation in the first quarter of twenty twenty three. And as a reminder, uh council did add nine thousand acres of land for development purposes as we went through the MCR process. Next slide, please. In addition to new land being added to the development area in Durham, we looked at the current cost of development charges in Durham compared to other jurisdictions in the GTA. In Durham, DCs range from just over sixty five thousand dollars per home to eighty five thousand dollars per home, with the average coming in at seventy four thousand, which is well below the provincial average of a hundred and sixteen thousand uh that is being widely quoted. Next slide, please. When looking at the total cost of new homes, the total DCs, local and regional, combined account for less than eight percent of the total price. This graph demonstrates that there are other opportunities to improve affordability of a home in the Durham region. And as you'll know, uh something as simple as the HST is significantly more than development charges in terms of its impact on housing prices. Next slide, please. Despite the favorable conditions for growth and development in Durham region, the province introduced Bill twenty three that applies across the province. Bill twenty three, More Homes Built Faster, Ontario's Housing Supply Action Supply Action Plan, twenty twenty two to twenty uh to twenty, I think that's supposed to be thirty through the three, there may be a typo in my notes, was introduced to facilitate increased housing supply by one point five million homes. The bill introduces sweeping sweeping changes to the Planning Act, Development Charges Act, and other legislation that has significant impact on municipalities at the regional and local level. There are serious concerns that the unintended consequences of the bill will make it more challenging for the region to coordinate and finance services for development. There remains uncertainty in the short term on the region's current uh development charge bylaw, and I we're happy to answer any questions on that. But as I said, we're trying to get more information with respect to where we uh sit on the provincial's implementation cycle. Overall, the bill re aims to reduce the amount of fees paid by the developer. However, the bill has no mechanism to oblige developers to pass on any savings realized by the lower fees to home buyers and can't guarantee that housing will be more affordable. There are many consequences to Bill twenty three, including impacts on the local area responsibility. But my presentation today will focus on the impact to the region, and I'll start by providing some high-level comments. Next slide, please. Thank you. Bill twenty three will have significant impact in how the region provides services and supports that to enable housing. Unfortunately, the bill moved through the provincial legislator very legislature very quickly, preventing regional council the opportunity to fully engage and comment on any concerns. That is why, staff, we submitted comments to the register and indicated that they were draft pending council uh approval this cycle. The bill was introduced by the province on October twenty fifth, the day following a municipal election in Ontario. And due to the short commenting tier period, as I said, staff did submit comments. While the commenting period was ultimately extended to December ninth, the deal the bill did receive royal assent on November twenty eighth. At this point, next slide, please. I will turn it over to Commissioner Bridgman, who will walk us through some of the planning implementation uh implications. Thank you, Brian.
Upper-tier municipalities, namely the regions of Halton, Peel, York, Waterloo, Niagara, and the county of Simcoe, are defined in the Planning Act as upper-tier municipalities without planning responsibilities. So what does that mean? Well, it means that Well, it means that regional council's role as an approval authority over lower-tier planning applications is being removed. But it does not mean that the entire upper-tier planning function is being eliminated. And I should say too, that while Bill twenty-three has received royal assent, the new role of upper-tier municipalities without planning responsibilities has not yet taken effect. The, the effective date is also called the proclamation date. So, on the date of proclamation, whenever that may be, and we don't know when it'll be, the Regional Official Plan as the guiding document for integrated land use, infrastructure, and financial planning is to be subsumed within the area municipal official plans. The Regional Official Plan will no longer be under the jurisdiction of the region. However, from a practical standpoint, the coordinated work needs to continue. It is the integrated, integrated growth management planning that informs the region's infrastructure planning, that in turn informs, uh, sustainable financial strategies. So the integration of these things, the land use planning, the infrastructure planning, the financial planning, uh, really can't be uncoupled. Next slide, please. Upon proclamation, the changes to the Planning Act under Bill twenty-three will impact regional council's ability to ensure the coordination of servicing and growth, which means, and I'll go through three points. Uh, the first point is that regional council will not be able to plan for growth on the provincially assigned population and employment forecasts under the growth plan. So significant changes and significantly higher assumptions could result in infrastructure being overbuilt. The second point is that planning and servicing initiatives for employment areas could be impacted since, um, employment area conversions would no longer require regional approval. And the third point is that planning for transit-oriented communities would be affected since densities in the regional official plan that are intended to optimize the use of transit infrastructure are no longer required to be included in the area municipal official plans. So, without a regional official plan approved by the province under the Planning Act, we may need to consider some form of regional, uh, guiding document, like a structure plan or something like that, to ensure that regional infrastructure is built and used efficiently. Next slide, please. Without a regional official plan and with a reduced role in local planning matters, uh, there's a couple of other points to, to bring forward. First of all, there is a risk that protection of arterial roads across the region would be reduced, potentially adding pressure to the existing arterial road network. And second of all, removal of the region's approval authority introduces fiscal uncertainty for the land value capture strategy for station delivery for the Go East Extension to Bowmanville. And in that regard, I think we heard earlier that, uh, the new station strategy for the Go East Extension will be discussed in detail at the, uh, next committee of the whole meeting on January the eighteenth. Next slide, please. Building one point five million homes in Ontario by two thousand and thirty-one is the main objective of the More Homes Built Faster Act, Bill twenty-three. And a tool, uh, by the province to help achieve this overall one point five million provincial housing target is the idea of individual targets to lower-tier municipalities that have populations of over a hundred thousand. And coupled with that, a new non-statutory tool known as a municipal housing pledge is being introduced through which municipalities are to demonstrate how their target is to be achieved. So the column on the left here, Durham GMS, which means Growth Management Strategy, two thousand and thirty-one, those are the allocations for our five Lake Shore municipalities to two thousand and thirty-one that have been developed through Envision Durham in collaboration with our area municipal counterparts. And so we have a degree of comfort with these figures. The middle column, called More Homes Built Faster, so those are the targets assigned by the province, again, to the five Lake Shore municipalities to be achieved as part of Bill twenty-three. And then the column on the right is the difference between our work and the housing target. Uh, you, I would point out that with respect to Clarrington and Pickering, uh, as a matter of fact, those targets are even less that we've planned for. Uh, and I would also point out that the Pickering number of thirty-nine thirty is, uh, without, uh, consideration of new units from the Hag Preserve lands that are proposed to be taken out of the green belt, which I will get to in a moment. So the number of new homes required in Durham under Bill twenty-three will be almost sixteen thousand more than originally planned. And the distribution of homes will be somewhat different than what's being planned for, with even greater emphasis by the province on Ajax with B and Oshawa. So, as we've heard many times, there is no question there is a need for more housing. And I just chair pause for a moment there to say, let's just remember that when we hear the word more homes or more housing, we're not just talking about, uh, detached homes in a greenfield setting. It means every single type of residential unit. It could be a basement apartment, a secondary suite, a deeply affordable unit, a studio condo in a high-rise somewhere, or a mansion somewhere else. So it's every single type of unit. And I would also point out that, um, if we were to do one million homes in ten years, that would probably be more than has been achieved in any decade. So, when we think about one point five, that's fifty percent more than, than historic, historically has ever been achieved. So it's, there is some risks when, uh, when we're imposing these great big, uh, these numbers. Next, uh, slide, please. So what this slide shows is, in the blue, is the number of building permits issued across Durham region in the last six years. And you'll see that the number varies between about three thousand units and just slightly over six thousand units in two thousand and twenty-one, which I guess we could describe as a banner year. The yellow bars are the forecasted growth as part of the Envision Durham process. And then to achieve the twenty, uh, the Bill twenty-three targets, we would need to see a more than doubling of housing production almost overnight. And that's the red line along the top, uh, somewhere in the neighborhood of over nine thousand, uh, units per year. And at a time when there are labor shortages and material shortage and interest rates and all these things, it's tough to see without hearing from the building community how these targets are going to be met in partnership with them. Next slide, please. Uh, next, I'll turn to the green belt, uh, legislation. Although not included in Bill twenty-three, shortly following the introduction of Bill twenty-three, the province introduced changes to the green belt legislation to provide more land to help achieve this one point five million new homes target. And the province has identified fifteen areas across the GTA. And, uh, that represents approximately seventy-four hundred acres of, of land. And of those fifteen areas, three are in Durham region, and the total there is about forty-five hundred acres, so more than half of the overall GTA total. If removed, the affected landowners are expected to develop detailed plans to build houses very quickly. Construction of homes must begin by two thousand and twenty-five, and significant process, uh, progress on approvals and implementation must be achieved by the end of two thousand and twenty-three. And, uh, from what we've heard, if these conditions are not met, the government has advised that it will return these lands to the green belt. Next slide, please. So here are the, the map showing these three sites in the region of Durham. On the left is the lands in the city of Pickering, located south of four oh seven, north of the CP tracks, east of York Durham Line, and west of the West Duffens Creek. And that, uh, shape represents one thousand seven hundred and thirty-six hectares or about forty-three hundred acres. The middle slide is the lands in the town of Ajax, located on the south side of Kingston Road East, west of Lake Ridge Road, and north of Highway four oh one. And, uh, that block represents fifty-two hectares or about one hundred and twenty-eight acres. And then lastly, on the right side is the lands in Clarrington, uh, located near the northwest corner of Nash Road and Hancock Road, west of, uh, the four eighteen. And that's thirty-five hectares or eighty-six acres. Next slide, please. The Regional Works Department has never had plans to extend services into any of those three areas. Uh, and that's obviously the case because the lands are in the green belt where development's not permitted. It's not designated for development, it's not included within the region's official plan, so there has been no work undertaken to contemplate servicing. Uh, to date, no development proposals have been received for these parcels, and no servicing solutions, uh, have been considered except only at the very highest level in the last, uh, few days or a week. So it's all been very preliminary to date. All to say that, uh, the two thousand and twenty-five timeline, uh, will be difficult to achieve. So is there a land supply problem in Durham? At present, there is a considerable supply of units and plans that have been draft-approved. And admittedly, about half of that number is in, uh, seat in phase two, so not necessarily imminent. But it would be our view that more new land is not required to meet, uh, the housing targets. And it should also be noted that, uh, there is a great deal of development potential inside the built boundaries within downtowns and along transit corridors. And since the housing targets are not just low-density, as I mentioned, uh, intensification can play a significant role in achieving the supply. Lastly, as stated in the Cow report, Cow thirty-one, the changes to the green belt raise significant environmental concerns. And, uh, these areas have not been studied comprehensively, so no work on mitigating the environmental impacts has been undertaken. So with that, I will turn it over to Nancy Taylor.
Thanks, Brian. Uh, one thing I wanted to spend a minute to, to comment on. So Brian, uh, mentioned proclamation date and how that affects the planning department and the planning, uh, role that the region has and that this council has. From the, uh, finance piece, it was actually effective as a royal assent on November twenty-eighth. So what that meant was that immediately affected us with respect to removing, uh, and reducing the charges as of that day. So my thanks, for example, to the local municipalities because, as you know, you collect development charges on our behalf. So there was a huge amount of work that needed to be done immediately that week to recalculate development charges, get our programs and systems amended so that your staff knew what to do when people came to the counter. We will also have to issue refunds for those that were, had come in that week, because of course with no notice, it took us a few days to turn that around. Uh, and we also, of course, have people that were partway through a process. So they'll come into your building department counters the week before, submit a whole pile of things, and then, uh, there's dialogue that goes back and forth, and then they get a value that they come in to pay often a few days later. So a lot of that, so my thanks to your, uh, local, um, staff for helping assist in trying to, to deal with that. So a number of the financial impacts for Bill twenty-three, as I say, come into play immediately. Uh, some don't have definitions yet, so while we're estimating, we can only estimate on the things that, uh, that we know. So I'll, I'll go through the slides here and have a, a few things that I'll, I'll comment on as we, as we work our way through. So as you know, development charges are very prescribed. I'm sure many of you have sat through background studies, both here at the region and at your local level. Uh, they're very dictated on how they take place, they are appealable, um, there is a whole formal process and structure around that. They are the main tool we have to recover growth-related capital costs of infrastructure from the growth that has triggered those costs. And then any costs that aren't funded by development charges becomes a cost to either existing taxpayers or, in the region's case, as well, the water sewer, uh, user rate payers. So Bill twenty-three, it reduces that development charge funding available and other development financing, uh, particularly the locals with respect to community benefits and the like. Um, and that's necessary to pay for that infrastructure that's required to support that new housing. So we're losing funds through things like exemptions, reductions, reductions and phases. Uh, so we are estimating a, a total loss of about two hundred and eighty-one million over the next five years. And that doesn't include the things that we can't calculate yet. And as you note on the slide here, that's things like exemptions for affordable and yet-to-be-defined attainable housing. And nor does it, it, this doesn't, number doesn't include your local, uh, math that's been taking place amongst, uh, the local levels, and our area treters have a meeting on Friday where we're going to chat about this a bit more. Uh, and nor does it, and we are assuming, uh, development charges needing to be phased in. As our CIO mentioned, there is some, uh, challenges because our bylaw expires early twenty, in two thousand and twenty-three. So that has some significant bearing, and, and so far, we have yet to find another municipality that has an expiry so soon after the legislation has received royal assent. So there are some interpretation difficulties for us, along with, uh, regulations that aren't yet released defining some things. So without those regulations, how do we do a background study that's required to give sixty days' notice in advance to the public? So there is a lot of issues for us, particular in Durham, over and above sort of the standard across the sector ones. So we'll go to the next slide, please. So this, a chart is in the report before you today, and it's our estimate of what we know today for the next five-year window, and it goes through the various categories here, like housing services, our phasing in of new DC rates, and the existing exemptions. So some of you will recall the last, uh, change to development charges allowed for exemptions and deferral agreements, uh, particularly for nonprofit developments. So those deferral agreements, we now have to pull those out and change them all, uh, because they, they are, in many cases, now get, uh, uh, getting a full exemption rather than paying over, over five or twenty years, uh, as well as those discounts for rental apartments. The bottom half of the slide is our estimate of the, the impacts for the coming five years, again, on the things that we know of, but we don't necessarily have definitions for. So the breakdown, uh, over those five years is about two hundred and eighty-one million. Uh, and I'm going to talk about a couple of implications of this on the next slide, so we can move to the next one, please. So what we wanted to do is give you some practical thoughts around, uh, some of the implications. So, uh, for example, we have collected DCs since two thousand and eighteen to support affordable housing developments. And that was used to fund a twenty-four-unit affordable housing project in Oshawa in two thousand and twenty-one. And in two thousand and twenty-two, the funding supported a fifty-two-unit affordable housing project in Clarrington. So that housing section wasn't dictated that it had to be the region building that housing. So Bill twenty-three removes that housing services as an eligible service, so we won't be able to collect money through that mechanism to help support affordable housing projects. Uh, there is granted, there will be additional development charges collected from new units, uh, that come online with Bill twenty-three. Um, but when you factor in discounts, exemptions, and phase-in, uh, it's not going to result in that growth paying for growth. It's going to be an even lesser degree. We've all known and talked about the fact that growth doesn't pay for growth. This is going to make that, uh, much higher pressure and, and a much greater challenge. So with reduced funding from DCs, municipalities will have to make choices to allocate property tax and water sewer rates, uh, funding between asset management needs, increased cost of infrastructure. Uh, and it also then has impacts on other regional priorities requiring additional investment. Because, as you know, our taxpayer base is, is not an unlimited source of funding. Uh, and council has challenges, as it is with, uh, with the trade-offs that we have to make in each budget process in order to try to determine a feasible rate that, uh, taxpayers can handle. So on that note, I will return the chair back to Elaine. Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy. If you could go to the next slide, please. Sorry, I got one slide ahead of myself. So there is one additional impact on slide twenty. I think it's just the slide before this one. Thank you. Uh, so Bill twenty-three also requires that York and Durham, uh, build capacity in the York Durham sewage system, and that the Duckman Creek Water Pollution Control Plant be used to service development known in, as the Upper York area. And that's the municipalities of Aurora, East Gulinberry, and New Market. Uh, we are in the process of working closely with York on a detailed review of what this will entail. And we'll be reporting that to council, uh, in the future with any implications with respect to servicing or costs, although we have been very clear through the chair and other channels that, uh, any incremental costs totally allocated because of the York expansion will, uh, not, uh, be burdened on the region. We want to make sure that that is confirmed by the province, however. In summary, next slide, please. Thank you. The region shares the The region shares the province's goal to get more houses built, especially the full spectrum of housing from supportive to affordable to market. Municipalities, however, do not build the housing. We have a role to play in enabling it to be developed. But there are unintended consequences in Bill twenty-three, as you have heard, that will make it more expensive and take longer to get the housing supply built. The planning and financial implications of the bill will make it harder to service growth in Durham. There is no obligation for builders, as I said, to actually build. The market dictates this, and the market sets home prices. There are no mechanisms in Bill twenty-three that require developers to build new homes or pass on savings to home buyers. We recommend, and we put this in our submission to the province, that regional council request that the province engage in a meaningful consultation process and amend the legislation to address unintended consequences for taxpayers. We also are recommending that staff be directed to explore a public education campaign to ensure that the impacts of the new legislation on uh the region's property taxpayers be known. Next slide, please. So many of the impacts of the bill remain unclear, as you heard from Brian and Nancy, and we will continue to monitor uh and assess the impacts of regulations and any amendments that come forward in this the coming months. Uh, we also will be assessing the impact of the proposed changes on our ten-year capital forecast, and if necessary, we'll report back on that. There are additional recommendations in the report, and pending council approval, we will liaise with provincial officials on issues requiring clarification. And in fact, with respect to development charges, we've already started that process. And we are also uh looking carefully at the potential in impact of the transit-oriented communities in the Nugo East Corridor. And we'll be reporting back on that, but also continue to work with provincial officials on some of these issues. Within the region, we are meeting uh the CIOs, local and regional CIOs, financial finance commissioners and planning commissioners, works commissioners. We'll be meeting on our own in January with a facilitator. As you have probably heard, each each regional government will be assigned a provincial facilitator, likely in January and France or February. We do not yet understand the terms of reference. Uh, but from what we have heard, it is likely to be how we are streamlining planet, how we can streamline our processes to ensure that the provincial targets are met and possibly to uh discuss other governance issues. So we are meeting with our own facilitator in January to try to come up with some scenarios that we can actually present to the provincial facilitator that demonstrates that the region and local municipalities in Durham are on the same page and are regularly working together to streamline processes. And I think I will end it there, Mr. Chair, and we're happy to ask for any questions.
Thank, thank you. Uh, we have a number of of speakers. Uh, first is Counselor Crawford.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I'm not sure who to uh direct this to, but um the number of the MPPs are meeting with uh their local, well, at least in our area, uh local council. And what they are saying is that the D C charges are really only uh affected on the affordable housing piece of the new build. Is that, is that, that, I don't know, I don't know who to ask. Uh, is that true? And is there a, is there a percentage of, let's say, so Ajax seventeen thousand houses are to be built in Ajax, is there a percentage of those houses that would be uh deemed to have to be affordable? Like, is your direction to the developer, you want me to stop talking?
No, i- i- it's, it's, your question is appropriating, and it's not houses, it's units.
Oh, units, okay.
Okay, so I I will go to our CIO.
Uh, I will start and then pass it over to uh the treasurer. Uh, there are no provincially mandated targets at this time. Whether or not that appears through uh regulation, we'll have to wait to see. Uh, however, as we meet with our local counterparts, I'm hoping that when we talk to the provincial facilitator, we can encourage them to have such targets in place to ensure that we are developing the full spectrum of housing requirements. And with respect to the D C impact, I will turn it over to Commissioner Taylor.
So if I may, if I understood your comment correctly, the 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 suggestion to you is that the impact in development charges is only for affordable housing. So what I would suggest to you, that it, that may be true for a, an affordable housing provider who now is exempt, uh is exempt from paying, depending on the definitions. From a municipal perspective with respect to development charges as a of a funding mechanism for all the works that are required, uh we've already had an instant impact. So the two examples that happened immediately upon royal ascent that I that I mentioned uh is the removing of the housing services D C. That happened last Monday, as soon as on the twenty-eighth, and my my days are running together. That happened immediately upon royal ascent, so we lost those funds instantly and had to change our fees. Uh, the other one that happened to the region of Durham, as an example, instantly was our transit development charges was approved last June by this council. And it it did not have to be phased in at that time. But because it was approved after the date in this legislation, it re, it now has to be uh phased in. So as of Monday, November twenty-eighth, we had to immediately reduce our transit development charge fee by to eighty percent. So we are in the midst, many of you will know this, of a transit uh servicing and stra, and strategy that we are bringing to you in the new year. Our our cash flow now has changed dramatically and instantly because this phase-in takes a number of years to take place. So those are the instant ones that that hit right off the bat. Uh, the other instant ones that hit right off the bat that I referenced are uh previously uh nonprofit would get a deferral over twenty years. Now they're getting an exemption, so all of those deferral agreements and the cash flow that was anticipated over those twenty years uh immediately ceases. So those are the instant ones right off the bat. Uh, the phase-in is probably the largest one that most of us are facing with respect to new bylaws that are coming forward. And as I mentioned, we're in a very odd and unfortunate, unique scenario with respect to when ours expires. Uh, but if we have to have a brand-new one for July one, it will immediately be phased in by the required legislation at eighty percent. So we could go, we could actually do all the work around a new bylaw and then have to reduce the charge July one, because when you put that eighty percent reduction, it's on the new rate, not on the the change in the rate. So you're not phasing up, you have to actually take eighty percent of what your new rate is. So there are other things in there, but those are the instant and immediate ones. There are some that we're waiting for definitions on, so for example, elimination of studies. Uh, we've calculated all the studies, but maybe some could stay in and some may not be able to. Uh, and elimination of land is yet to be defined. So again, maybe, you know, road allowances are allowed, but land for a facility is not. We don't know that. We only know that uh they're going to issue a regulation on land. So some we know we're going to lose funds, but we can't, you know, we're we're having to use uh estimates and assumptions to determine what that might be.
So this notion of just relax, it's only going to be on affordable housing is kind of a miss no more then, right?
We lost money starting November twenty-eighth.
Right. Um, yeah, and so we already know we're behind in our uh, you know, police services as far as what our current uh numbers are to us, to be able to handle um, you know, the population of Durham region, so you now you explode those numbers again. And uh we're going to be in trouble there, fire services, they're all funded through, you know, uh, the Fire Master Plans, all fires, right, you know, uh funded through D Cs. Like, it's, I feel like that that this government um in its attempt to do good, which we do need more housing, I a hundred percent agree, and but, I mean, affordable housing doesn't necessarily mean it's actually affordable. Um, and so uh I feel like it's going to literally cripple um municipalities. And uh, not really a question, my question has been answered, thank you. Um, but uh I appreciate the time. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just to the uh, to the presentation, um specific to the terms of reference. I I understand that not many uh have the terms of reference, um if at all. And I know through you to the CIO, there's discussions as to what those terms of reference look like. Just wondering if we have any idea when this will come into effect, regardless of royal ascension and even the November twenty-eighth date and us losing transit funds. Um, when, when are we, how are we expected to conduct ourselves and by when? Because I, without the terms of reference, I really uh speaking from, I guess, our standpoint as councillors, I I don't know what to expect.
Uh, thank you through you, Mr. Chair. Uh, no one has received terms of reference as of yet, so I have no information on that other than uh when this initially came up, it was anticipated that it would be looking at how to uh better streamline uh planning processes through to, in case, in the case of two tiers. Uh, and I'm assuming it will look at how do we address infrastructure planning. But again, there's no terms of reference at this point. The other issue that's come up is uh possibly the facilitators getting more information on how a two-tier government may work in other, or sorry, a strong mayor system may work in other uh areas of the province. That's all we've heard to date. Uh, we have consistently heard that we should know that the, who the facilitator is very early in the new year. So I'm anticipating January, February, and ideally, we'll have the terms of reference at that time also.
So at that point, through you, Chair, uh, will be privy to the facilitation of the terms of reference? Or would that happen separately with the CIOs across the region then brought to council?
Well, we won't be developing the terms of reference. The province will be giving them to the facilitator.
Of course.
We'd be happy to share that with council, uh, either or not. If we need an action report, we'll bring it to council. If not, we would put an information report on the information package.
Uh, I appreciate that. I think when we look at um the way that D Cs are structured, uh, and I think the question came forward regarding uh, you know, affordable housing. We see it affecting transit. There is going to be an effect uh on a broad level with uh a number of different um categories. Uh, I wanted to ask the question specific to um the increase in what we could see in D Cs. And having read the, I would call it legislation now, uh, there's, it's, it kind of emulates um some of the the provincial legislations that only allow you, for example, that uh with tenants, you can only increase to a certain percentage. We're being mandated through that legislation what we can increase the D Cs within our municipalities. Is that correct?
Not so much how how much to increase them, but what what would be eligible for D C coverage and how those D C charges are phased in, so you will not be able to collect a hundred percent at the front end. But I'll look to Nancy in case there's any more specifics to be added.
Uh, that's correct. They're not putting a cap on the value. They're putting a phase-in, which is quite a deep phase-in.
Okay, and and having said, understood that, because there was discussion about a percentage being the maximum per year. Um, i- if that's not the case, I know that we're bound by legislation that doesn't allow us to bonus. But reading through the legislation, I don't see anything preventing us from being uh punitive and and uh putting forward penalties to uh to recoup our costs in in consideration for the units that we approve. And I know that um, you know, there's a, there's an incentive for for folks that are for people in the industry to move forward and actually do so in a timely way where they have less of a D C if performing the work. But what prevents someone uh from not doing anything? And then just simply, you know, paying the D C in the long term, that that would otherwise apply. And and that would defeat the purpose in what the numbers are uh in in the forecast that we've been presented. So at that point, does the region have the ability, after putting in all of its uh professional services and time and effort, um, to go the opposite way and 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 request more funding from from that, you know, uh, from that body or from that industry?
Uh, that's a difficult question to answer. I think in discussions with other regional and local CIOs, I think uh, and in listening to comments with from the province, they have uh stated that we would be made whole, uh, how that would happen.
With a, with a W or with an H?
Well, that's a good question. I didn't ask that one.
Yeah.
So I think what we really need to do is, as I mentioned earlier, as uh finance gets uh a better handle on the true impact on our revenues through D Cs, uh, we'll then have to remove, review our ten-year capital forecast to uh see uh the impact on that. And it will likely require uh pushing out some projects. Uh, and based on that, I think we'll be able to determine a gap that we can then uh discuss uh with the province. Uh, we're working on this across the GTA, so all the regional CIOs have asked their staff to do similar work. And the hope is that we'll have preliminary results in the middle of January, and then we'll determine the best strategy from there, but it may well involve a special Marco meeting in the new year.
The reason why I ask that, uh, through you, Chair, is uh, I think whether it's at this level or at the lower municipal level, our staff and and council has put in a lot of time, not to mention the community. Um, you know, is under stress with respect to projects when they're presented. They're approved, and oftentimes they change, and they change, and they change. And in in some cases, we have thousands of units that were approved, and they still haven't been built. And I think that the flip side is, while we don't have the manpower and, you know, the the supply chain, and that's something that we've heard recently, and it's a reality, but I think ultimately, we could get into a situation where, through you, uh, Chair, you know, we may not meet our targets because it's not necessarily our doing, but the industry itself and may not be as realistic as I set out. The last question that I do have is specific to uh assets, because I see that in in exchange for green space or recreational assets. There's a public component there where they can actually use what we've already got. Um, I think within the legislation and refer to that and say, well, you've already got X amount of space nearby, and that's what we're going to access in order to meet our green space requirement. Is this something that I'm reading correctly, or is this uh, is it still being massaged?
I think I'll ask Brian to comment on that, if that's okay. But there are certainly reductions in green space requirements.
Uh, through you, Mr. Chair, and I will say, I, that's something I'm not as conversant on, being parkland being a a lower-tier responsibility. Uh, I'm probably not best equipped to answer it.
Okay. Well, I just give everyone a heads up, but kind of a nerd, so I read the legislation a bit. And in there, there's some really interesting stuff. Uh, so I, I appreciate the opportunity to be able to ask questions specific to that. But the um, the targets are what concern me, because we look at just the city of Ashwood, per se, uh, with eighty-one hundred units, I believe, in the ballpark thereof, and uh, potential loss of nearly seventy-five million. Um, or I would say the impact being seventy-five million thus far, hearing the region's at over two hundred million nearly. Um, and then the rest of the municipalities, I think, and then looking at the targets within that period. It's uh, I mean, it's, it's very much more a challenge than it is a reality at this point. Not criticizing, I'm just saying that it's, it's very difficult to see how that can be reality without the financial um, you know, uh, component being on our side as well. So I I appreciate everyone in in their context today.
Mayor Schumer?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and uh through you, uh, and and thank you to the the CIO for for this presentation. Um, page twelve, uh, where it has these uh, these targets uh that have been uh dumped down on us. Um, do we have any idea where they got these targets from? I mean, was this, were these numbers pulled out of a hat or what?
Uh, Brian, do you have a sense?
Um, my, my sense is that it's looking over, um, looking at the production in that municipality over a period of time and more or less just straight lining as a projection what uh it would be looking out. So it's uh, it's not exactly pulled out of a hat, but um, that's my understanding. It's not a uh, a a detailed calculation.
Okay. And so, so in other words, we we were given, nobody's been given any uh justification or reasoning for these numbers?
That would be correct.
Okay. Um, page fourteen, uh, speaking to the the lands that are coming out of the green belt. Uh, it speaks to significant progress. So uh, to me, this sounds like more uh generalities uh in this legislation. But do we have any idea what significant progress means?
I'm just looking at the slide of.
Last paragraph there.
Through, through you, Mr. Chair, we we don't have any information, province, about what significant progress means.
Yes.
But it's um been a tool commonly used by the province to use minister zoning orders. And I think if a minister zoning order was to be used for one or all of these sites, that would probably constitute significant progress.
Okay. Um, well, I guess that probably answers my next question. Uh, and that was, you know, given that tight timeline of tw, the end of two thousand twenty-three. Uh, I mean, what happens if, you know, I mean, obviously, we have no plans to put services in there. Um, it's not. Um, it's not an overnight thing. So what happens if uh, if we don't have plans to put servicing in, uh, is that the developer's uh excuse for no significant uh uh progress? And what, they get an extension then, uh, rather than the lands going back into the green uh, green belt?
I think that's an issue through you, Mr. Chair, that we will have to raise with the provincial facilitator when uh we meet with him or her, uh, because we do not really understand what that will entail. At this point, we know we have nothing in our 10-year capital forecast for servicing areas of the green belt, so it would, if we were mandated to do it, it would require a major rethink of the 10-year capital forecast and the delay of a number of other projects which could impact growth in other areas of the region.
Okay, thank you. I I just don't, I don't see how uh there's going to be any kind of of real movement on these lands uh in in a few months' time, because that's really what we're talking about here. I mean, it's it's really going to come down to a few months. Uh, but I'm I'm sure the pro- I'm sure the province will just give extensions. Uh, lastly, um, page eighteen uh on the uh, the the numbers there, just for clarification, then, we're talking to two, a total of two hundred, two hundred and eighty-one million, uh, and that is over whatever periods of time are indicated in that last column, correct?
So that, oh, go ahead, Nancy.
So through the chair, that's over a five-year window and doesn't include the things that that we don't know clearly enough uh what the implications are to calculate.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Um, Mayor Foster?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I just figured out those little uh brown thingies up there. Uh, Mr. Chair, this question's really to you. Does it uh, does it make sense to alter the agenda and deal with the reports that we discussed and debate this once, uh, the report as well as the uh presentation? And if so, I'll be happy to make that motion. And if not, I'll I'll wait until we get to the report with my questions.
Uh, there are a number of people wishing to speak. Uh, next would be Counselor Pickles. Pardon, Counselor Chapman? Okay, so Counselor, uh, Mayor Foster, you have, you have to say it.
Sure, I'll, um, I guess we need a motion to alter the agenda to deal with uh, uh, report twenty twenty-two dash cow dash thirty-three.
Okay, seconded by Counselor Chapman, just like uh two-thirds. Simple majority, okay? Uh, no, altering agenda, simple majority will call the vote. All those in favor? In opposition? None. Uh, so we will continue. So, Mr. Clerk, continue with the speaker's list? Oh, so we need a motion to remove, uh, to, sorry, we need a motion to move the report. Moved by uh Mayor Foster, seconded by Mayor Witten. Okay, the report's now on the floor. We'll continue with the speaker's list. Okay. So uh, that would make Counselor Pickles, you're next on the list.
The, thank you, uh, Chair Henry. Can you hear me okay? And is my camera on? Because I'm I'm doing it from my phone for the first time.
Uh, we can hear you. Um, Mr. Clerk, I'm not sure, I can't, cannot see you on my device.
Counselor Pickles, your camera is not activated.
So, Counselor Pickles, we can see you now.
Okay, thank you. Um, I I had the benefit of hearing number of the questions of my colleagues, so I've pared down the questions that I had, but with respect to financial hit, um, I I wanted to clarify, if my observation is correct, that a number of municipalities have higher development charges than us and lower tax rates than us. And the provincial government has made reference to some municipalities having very large unspent reserves. So the question that I'd like to ask the staff for clarification is, do the reserves that we have are dedicated reserves for dedicated projects. We do development charges, as the lower tiers do, we do development charges studies, we take development charges, we put them in those dedicated funds, uh, and let's say we want to build, uh, I'll say a sewage treatment plant, that we we collect funds in there. Uh, at some point, we may have half the funds to build a sewage treatment plant, but eventually we'll have enough funds to proceed with it. So we don't have surplus cash sitting around in reserve or uh funds for that aren't already dedicated for approved uh projects that are according to our study. There isn't a slush fund of money sitting around somewhere that is unspoken for.
So, members of ca- members of council, so Counselor Pickles, you're absolutely right. Most of our, most of our reserves, almost all of them, are dedicated reserves to projects that have already been approved by council. I'll go to our commissioner to uh comment.
So through the chair, I'll go one step further with respect to the development charges reserve. We already identified in our 10-year forecast, specific line-by-line projects that will be funded from those reserve funds. So it isn't even an allocation just assuming the projects in our DC background study, which of course it has to be to be to raise the funds, but we actually in our forecast identify exactly which projects in that 10-year window. So that part of the legislation, we have always complied with. That's that's uh, our funds are very dedicated.
And and just, and thank you, and just back to Nancy. So you you know what I'm saying? The the narrative of the provincial government has been that municipalities have collected a lot of money that they're sitting on, that they haven't spent, and therefore they don't need any new development charges, and that's why they're being cut. And what I wanted to seek clarif- clarification from you was that we've collected development charges based on dedicated budgeted projects. There's no surplus cash sitting around. Uh, we are would be negatively impacted, and I think in the report it says about a quarter billion dollars. Uh, that either means we don't have the money, we don't do the projects, or we have to get money from somewhere else. Could you just s- speak to that to confirm that is correct?
So that's correct for Durham, and in in actual fact, uh, when you look at the water sewer detailed budgets uh from yesterday, if you look at the end of the summary of the forecast for each of water and sewer, you can see that we're actually in a deficit position with respect to uh development charges on the non-res side, that, you know, we're collecting specific for the projects that are identified. So that's very much the case, very specifically here in Durham. Uh, can I state definitively that there are municipalities, generally the the, I'll say, if there are funds in a reserve fund which do not apply to Durham, that are growth-related funds, it often applies to very significantly large municipalities who can't predict the projects as as well as a smaller large municipality could do. So they have the funds accumulated, they are earmarked for projects, but they can't necessarily say this project will be now and this project will be next, simply because of the different circumstance they're in with the sheer magnitude. But we are very clearly, very specific and report annually on exactly what we have going on.
And just to be clear, the financial impact that would be caused by Bill twenty-three to us, and I think you had it in your slide, was over a quarter of a billion dollars. Do I have that correct?
That's correct.
That's correct. That's what we've estimated at this point.
And my my other question, I think it's more a Brian Bridgman question, um, and and he had added on his slide uh deck with respect to Bill twenty-three, although it's not technically a Bill twenty-three item, uh, removals from the green belt. Um, at the city pickering, we had a staff report that if lands are to be removed from the green belt, it is recommended that appropriate land use policy framework be put in place to protect open space, natural heritage areas, provincially significant to natural features. So my my question to uh Mr. Bridgman is, if these areas are removed, what if any uh provisions are in place or ought to be put in place to zone appropriately to protect environmentally sensitive areas, the whole range of environmentally sensitive areas, uh, re- reeves, uh, uh, wildlife corridors, linkages, buffers, all those things we would normally do when we do planning like we did in Seton?
Uh, thank you for that question, and uh through you, Mr. Chair. Before, normally, before you get to the point of putting zoning down on on land, there is an extensive secondary plan process that looks at everything that would go into the development of a of a complete community that has all manner of of amenities and uh assets and things like that. So uh, if you're talking about the environmental side, typically, there would be some sort of uh watershed-type study, environmental study, including natural heritage. Um, and then as we get into more detail and start to look at the development limits to ensure that uh the water courses and things like that are protected. So normally, or often, that work is is done at a secondary plan stage. That then informs the uh the subdivision design, and it's the subdivision design that then informs the the zoning that would really lay down the fine details.
Okay. So is is that there now, or are you assured that it's there or not there? Would you suggest that the lower-tier municipality, upper-tier municipality, and TRCA assist the province in making sure that is in place?
Uh, well, thank you for that, because that's a a good suggestion. One, it's not there now, and number two, I think it would be a a very good idea for uh the region and the city to ask the province to put in some sort of uh mechanism of some sort, an agreement or otherwise, to ensure that that important environmental work and the servicing and the transportation and all the things that would go into a secondary plan are in place before um, you know, homes start coming out of the ground.
Uh, thank you for that, Mr. Bridgman, and I I should have said conservation authorities as opposed to just TRCA, because there's more than TRCA involved here. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I do appreciate uh the reporting comments of staff. It is my intention to to support the staff recommendations, and I I thank you for being able to ask those questions.
Okay, thank you. Mayor Roy?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair, and I'm just going to start out with just making a statement that uh I don't think that the solution to housing is uh um dependent on one level of government. I think it's dependent on all of us to come together, um, including our agencies and also our development community to find that solution. Um, I'm going to ask the question just with relation to uh and continue what Counselor Pickles was asking about our development charges. Uh, it's it's being stated that um the expectation is to ask municipalities to spend or allocate at least sixty percent of their reserve balances each year. Uh, do we have an answer of what that potentially could look like to us, and what would we allocate those sixty percent to?
So if I may, through the chair, uh, they don't say that you have to spend it each year. They say you have to allocate, and we already do that at the region of Durham. So in our forecast, we already allocate uh every dollar uh that we are projecting to come in and every dollar that we have in the in the uh reserve funds already. And when we do a renewal of the DC bylaw, any balances that are in those reserve funds are subtracted off the top in the new bylaw, so they're accounted for there as well.
And and I knew the answer, but I had to ask the question because um that's what's being communicated out to the residents of uh of Whitby at this present time. Um, I do have further is that with the federal housing accelerator fund, um, it's being uh implied that the federal government in this housing accelerator fund can be utilized uh to assist to offset um what uh is being taken away through the DCs from the provincial government. Um, from my understanding, that is not the case. Is this true?
So if I may make a comment about it, um, and it's more about the difficulties and challenges perhaps. So I I have not yet seen the rules around this accelerator fund. Uh, I will use uh an equivalent example of the, what's called the ICIP program. Our our difficulty with multi-level uh government funding is that each level has their uh determination of what their priorities are, and they have their determination of what their rules are. So the problem is when you're at the the bottom of that pile, so to speak, uh, trying to comply with multiple level of of rules causes a great deal of challenging for when you would have certainty on a project and what cost would be excluded, and that happens very, very frequently. So for example, for the ICIP, land is excluded, so that's already on our our agenda. Um, the other rules often that the federal government has, for example, is they don't agree with any sole source procurement. So an example that we currently had to had to deal with a great deal, and and the CIO and I have spoken about this, in our recent ICIP, we had ambulances, and there is one company that bought out the competitor. So there is only one ambulance company, but they have two operating names. And the federal government, we spent a very long time arguing with them that it wasn't a sole source procurement, there was only one company. So while I would hope that we would leverage any grant funding opportunity, including the accelerator, the question is what the rules are around it, how we might be able to access and obtain it, and what that timing is compared to the timing of when we have to spend, because often that's a huge challenge in these processes as well. Certainly, we would leverage everything that we could in any scenario, um, but there would be significant challenges, and it all depends on what the rules are that the federal government would insist upon, and then what rules the province then would would need from their end, that we would have to work our way through those processes.
Okay, and I appreciate that. Uh, lastly, Mr. Chair, um, we're referring to slide twelve, and that was the comparator between our plan and the more homes built faster plan. It would be interesting to have, um, I would say, a couple of different um additional uh columns in there, and one is, is that uh how many homes does each municipality have ready that they could get building permits today? I know Whitby has eight thousand.
Mr. Bridgman, do you have any idea of the number of homes that are shovel-ready in the uh in in the region?
Not not as a precise number, and and also in particular in terms of the um intensification in the downtowns and the corridors and so on. We know that through the envisioned Durham work, it's a substantive number. It's uh potential, but as to whether which ones are really shovel-ready today, I I don't have that.
So just before you go, Mr. uh Mayor Carter, you you just signaled, how many do you have in Oshawa? Eight thousand, eight thousand?
I appreciate that, because I think it'd be interesting information to put out there as well, too. And while we know, and it was already stated within the the presentation, municipalities issue permits, we don't build the homes. Um, the next part of it was uh just the comparator of the DCs between each municipality. I know that for our community, um, combined together between uh the regional and the school board, that uh for new development, eighty percent of the DCs applies towards um growth. Um, so the other twenty percent is being taken up by the taxpayer at this present time. That comparator would also be interesting across the regions to know what that looks like and how we are doing. I know that uh for ourselves with um our DCs, and uh we we all know that we go through our de- uh development charges review, and that it's stipulated by the development charge, which is provincially mandated by the their act. Um, it's, it just behooves me that uh we're at this place where we are now, but our messaging, not only from this presentation today, but our at our local municipalities, and Ontario big-city mayors, and all the other associations, it's the exact same messaging, but we're not being heard. That's it, Mr. Chair?
Thank you. Uh, Counselor Brenner?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, just want to pick up a little bit on one of the questions that were asked at the very, very beginning of the discussion, and that had to do with the the economic components and how it will impact us at Durham region and our taxpayers. Some of the MPPs have alluded to the fact that we would be, we would not end up uh suffering any economic loss as long as we achieved the targets. In the presentation, the targets that have been set while for the city of Pickering is down, but for the region overall, across the region, it's it's still higher. In looking at the targets and the re- and the realistic facts that we have no control over sale of properties, consumers determine that, would it be fair to say that we would probably, according to what the MPPs are saying, that we will be penalized in terms of the funding that normally we should be entitled to get from the province of Ontario? That they're going to take a punitive approach and in fact punish us for not achieving their targets?
I think uh, I won't use the term punitive, but I think the implication...
Okay, I did.
The implication is that uh, if there is any... The implication is that if there is any provincial money to plug a shortfall because of changes to development charges, the availability of that money, it looks like it's not confirmed, would be tied to our ability to meet the targets. But again, that's an issue that I think we need to raise with the provincial facilitator. It's one of those areas that definitely requires clarification and also an understanding on the part of the province, well, as to what it will take to get certain lands ready for development.
If I might, Mr. Chairman. Also, I know that a lot of work has gone into Envision Durham in terms of the document that sets really the roadmap for the region of Durham and all of our lower-tier municipalities. What does this actually do to the feasibility of even implementing and moving forward with the final stages or next stages of Envision Durham, based on Bill 23 and what the regulations entail in terms of agricultural lands, green, green belt lands, all those additions, none of which are captured in Envision Durham?
Mr. Bridgman?
Through you, Mr. Chair. So Envision Durham plans out to 2051 with provincially assigned forecasts of 1.3 million population and 460,000 jobs to 2051. And, you know, we're at a very, very advanced stage, and the previous council had identified the land need, the quantum that would be necessary to achieve that, that's the 9,000 acres. And then now, we're sort of trying to understand this additional, say, 4,500 acres that represents the green belt takeouts. And, you know, that's, that's like adding a, a new seat in some respects, and it's not clear whether there's a timeframe to that, whether that would be part of the 2051, 2056, 2061, whatever. And so I, I think in terms of impact, it just does call into question the, the servicing and infrastructure work that the Works Department has to do and see how it's, needs to compete with things that are already going ahead and in the pipeline.
Another question I have, Mr. Bridgman, if I might, when you touched on very, very briefly, and you talked about the, the green belt example, of the, I think you said about 4,500 acres, do we know what percentage of those acreage, acreage would in fact be even considered to be developable, considering some of them abut onto the Rouge Park federal jurisdiction? Some of them are probably provincially significant lands, wetlands, marshlands, a number of other environmentally areas that need to be protected? Do you happen to know the percentage across the region?
Through you, Mr. Chair. For the, the ag preserve lands, the percentage is roughly 50%, somewhere in that of Natural Heritage System. Could be a little more, could be a little less, but it's of the 4,000-something acres. It's in the ballpark of 2,000 acres, I think. For the Ajax site, it's pretty unencumbered. And for the Clarrington site, I don't have as good a handle on that, but, so I'd, I'd be guessing.
Thank you. I find it very ironic that the province is going to audit all municipalities, or this municipality and other municipalities, as part of Bill 23, yet provincially, their own auditors did not do very well provincially.
Counselor Dyves.
Adrian taught me that. Okay. I have a question through you, Mr. Chair, to Commissioner of Planning, with respect to those lands in Ajax that are, are coming out, being, with the green belt lands that are being removed. There's 120 acres, but on that parcel is a designated heritage property. And I haven't heard of that happening yet, or what, if that would still be respected by the province.
Through you, Mr. Chair. I haven't heard either what plans there would be for the heritage property. There's also a, a triangle of, of land that pertains to the ramp onto the 401 eastbound that would be taken out. But as far as the, the heritage homes, I haven't heard.
Okay, thank you. My other question is to the Clerks' Department. I had forwarded a motion that basically supported planning's perspectives on both green belt and Bill 23. And I was wondering if it would make it, or make more sense to take out that number three and therefore to ask that the province return environmental and green belt protections to the Duffins Rouge Agro Preserve in the CAO's letter that is attached to the report on the green belt?
Through you, Mr. Chair. That could be considered as an amendment to that report. However, that would be under Report 2022 Cal-31. We're currently dealing with Cal-33 with respect to the Bill 23 comments.
So you, you would like it under Bill 23?
Under Cal-31.
Cal-31. Can we do it there, then?
That amendment could be brought at that time.
Okay, thank you. That's my questions. Thank you, Chair.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Wu.
Yeah, through the Chair. Thank you. And to the CAO, or no, I should say to the, well, either one Commissioner or the CAO, could you put up the slide again that had the chart where it breaks down the cost of the house and where development charge fits in there?
I'll just look to Roger. Is he there? That would be slide six. I don't know that Roger's there right now.
Yes, he's there.
Oh, sorry, Roger. Thank you. There you go.
Okay. In that, and I think the component for area municipality DCs and other fees are kind of tiny, but it stands out, 3.43%. And that is one part of the, would you say, the cost of a, and it says semi or signal or semi-detached home. Is that pretty standard? If you, if I could use that, use that term standard?
This would be based on the average in Durham, and our average tends to be lower than at the provincial average. We're averaging 75,000 per unit, and I believe the province is 130 or so, Nancy?
If I may through the Chair, the province is, I think 116 is what they quoted. It could have a slight variation in the total percentage, but I would think on a percentage basis, the value of homes would be greater elsewhere, so the percentage of the, the DCs in relation is likely fairly consistent, give or take.
So even with that amount of money and, and with the DCs, and I think it's always been said that growth should pay for growth. Now, through you, the Chair, to the CAO or to the Commissioner, has that been the case? Are we able to offset it? What we get in DCs, is that offsetting really for that growth?
It does not offset 100% of the growth, and I'll ask Nancy if she can comment with any data.
So through the Chair, development charges have never been seen to, to cover the full cost of growth, because within the legislation, over the course of time, there have been various exemptions and rules around discounts, rules around benefit to existing and how you calculate those. So there are a number of subtractions that are legislated, both in previous versions of development charges and, and current ones. So those, those are offset by municipal sources, whether it be tax levy or, or other municipal sources.
Okay. And I think Counselor Pickles did use this, and, and again, I'll, I'll ask through the Chair, to the CAO, if the DCs are certainly reduced, now, he said money has to come from somewhere else. And I'm looking around, where would that money come from?
It would likely come from an increase in property taxes to businesses and homeowners. So it would move the cost of some of the growth to those that are, have already paid for growth in their community.
I didn't quite hear that. Could you repeat that?
Sorry. It would transfer the cost from development charges, most likely to the property tax base, which would increase the pressure on local residents and businesses.
Right. So I would assume if we did not go ahead and provide, let's say, the soft services and from a local level, the recreation facilities, and if we didn't, obviously, the, the new growth that is anticipated would be overtaxing our facilities. And as local councillors and councillors here, I've heard in the past, you know, it used to be where you'd have volunteer groups that may raise money and build those rinks and build those pools, you know, the Lions Club, the Kinsmen, probably not so much the Masons, but, but now I've heard, you know, I, I get the calls, I pay big taxes, I want this. Now, with development charges, when I look at that chart, in the end, who ends up paying for that? Would you guess? Would you guess, and through the Chair?
I'll take it to a regional perspective, where we would be talking about paramedic stations, police infrastructure, social service infrastructures such as childcare centers. And the cost is, there's generally a provincial contribution to those costs. They're generally, today have been included in our development charges, and a portion of them would be covered through that. If they were no longer included in development charges, then again, we would have to look at the timing of delivery, what more could be put on the property tax base. So it becomes, it becomes a very difficult question. What we would really have to do is revisit our entire 10-year plan. And I think what you're talking about really is not just building housing units, it's building whole communities, which includes a range of housing and other supports. And that is something that really needs to be clarified in this. Schools are another example. So that really is another thing that we would propose raising with the provincial facilitator. Nancy, I'm not sure if there's anything you want to add.
I think the only other thing I might suggest for councillors around the table, I do have, I'll, I'll put on a rusty hat from a local perspective, if you will, and just maybe add that bit of context. Your challenge is, and, and it's true for all services, you calculate your service based on a historic service level. So as all of you have heard us Treasurers say over and over again, you can't improve a service level through development charges. You can only match exactly what you're providing to existing residents. So if that means in your recreation facility, you have one pair, one square foot per resident is your standard, then that's what you can provide to new. So if you're expanding a facility, you have to sort that dollar value out and can only fund the new portion for the new growth. If you're looking at those kinds of facilities now, where you're not sure what your development charge cash flow is going to be, your concern on, there'd be two concerns. Number one would be ongoing cash flow to pay to venture debt, because if you're going to get less money coming in, do you take that leap to put in a large upfront dollar value? But the other thing that you have to keep in mind is that the historic service level, number of years, is proposed to change from 10 to 15. So that means if you have a very poor service level, you will continue to have a very poor service level, and you'll have those challenges. And I think one of the other councillors asked that question in, in context of parks. So the volumetric usage will, will be there on a burden for that. From the local to the upper tier, the other thing I would suggest to you is that the, a lot of the upper-tier services are essential, and I don't mean to say that, that recreation facilities aren't essential from many different social reasons, but paramedics and police and the like, you know, we have to provide an appropriate service level response regardless of where the revenue comes from. So if we can't get it from DCs, we can't opt to reduce a service level. We're already challenged, this council will see in, in the spring, are, are coming back on our, our paramedic master plan and what that means.
Yeah, thank you. And my last question, and I'm going to pivot away from development charges, and a lot's been said, you know, when they throw the term affordable housing. And if I look at on the Cal-33, 2.3, requirements to deliver new affordable housing do not form part of the bill. And the legislature has predicated on the assumption that significant additional housing supply will be sufficient to drive down overall housing prices. Can you speak more to that?
So we are waiting for the province to define affordable, and I can't remember the other word they use. The affordable definition that's been used today is 80% of the market annual rent in the CMA, which is not truly affordable for the vulnerable populations in our communities. It's kind of the, the less expensive end of market housing is an average, you know, 80% of the average. There's going to be some at 80, some 120. So no, it does not address true affordability or deep affordability for the most vulnerable residents. And I think the province has said publicly that that will be addressed through other mechanisms, of which we don't know what they are at this point.
Okay, that's, thank you very much.
We're still on first round. So next would be Mayor Ash.
All right, thank you. Mr. Chair, thank you, as we close in on five hours on this first item of, of the agenda. Let's move on myself in a second. Mayor Martin, that we call a question.
Okay, there is a motion on the floor to call the question. Mr. Clerk, two-thirds on calling the question? Simple majority. There is a motion on the floor to call a question. The report's on the floor, yeah. Just, just... We'll have to call for a recorded vote on calling the question. Mr. Clerk?
Members, this will be an electronic recorded vote. Please use the yes or no buttons on your panel. And for electronic participants, a prompt will appear on the right side of your screen. Please, please select yes or no. We will display the results at the end of the vote. I will note that all voting members will be called to vote. The calculation at the end will be based on the number of members present and voting. I'll now open the vote.
Next in the first time is Mayor Carter, or sorry, Mayor Carter, yes.
Got me all excited there from Mr. Chairman, and I'm back and forth, so. So good afternoon, good morning, and hopefully not good evening. So just, I, I have a question to the CAO. As this bill was being discussed, I, I'm presuming that communication was, was transmitted to you and to our other CAOs across the region of Durham in regards to the, the change that was being proposed?
The change being proposed through the legislation?
Yeah.
No, we, we found out when everybody else did on the, the day after the election. We had rumors, but we, we were not, I can't speak for my...
but we were not, I can't speak for my local counterparts, I can tell you I was not formally consulted, and I don't think the other regional CAOs were formally consulted either.
I appreciate that, because I checked with our CAO and our departments, and we weren't consulted either. What really did surprise me is the MPPs have all said that they were in the room when this bill was discussed and suggested. So all of them, that even have municipal experience, thought it was a great idea. So I thought, I found that very, very, very surprising. Just to let you know, Mr. Chairman, the target of 2,300 units that were going to be required at the city of Oshawa, we've never retained, we've never done that, and it has 2,300 units. No, over a 10-year period, we've got to do 2,300 units a year. We haven't hit that number, and it will be difficult to hit the 2,300. So we're very concerned in regards to the impact that is happening. The concerns that I have is not only that this bill has been handled in such a way and that it was brought in certain way, but I got a piece of correspondence here, this is about, as Ezekiel says, this is about, all they're trying to do is build more houses, that's what the whole idea behind this bill is. This correspondence here says, from an MPP, says, "This is why the government's decision to rein in unsustainable and out-of-control municipal fees on new home buyers is the right thing to do, and that's why our position on Bill 23 will not waver." My frustration is, is that this is impacting local municipalities at a vital time, and our finances, and one is, people should have been part of the conversation. That's number one. I think all of us want to achieve and help make sure that we plant good communities, build enough homes, and find an affordable envelope that individuals are able to achieve. I don't believe that this bill will do it. I've talked to developers, I can tell you that none of them have the intent of decreasing housing prices by $116,000, just to let you know. I am frustrated that the MPPs were in the room and those MPPs thought it was a good idea. What I am also concerned about is the services that are needed to be able to do this. We've talked about water and sewer and those kind of things, but we haven't talked about the impact in regards to social services, EMS, policing, that will be necessary to be able to provide the services necessary for these residents. We haven't really addressed the infrastructure aspect of being able to achieve that as a municipality and as a regional government, which puts tremendous pressure on all of our municipalities and our regional government. And I'm disappointed that, that the type of aggression that has been used in language by some of the spokespersons for the provincial government have been utilized. I think a kind of gentler way of including the municipalities into the conversation, asking our ideas and bringing concepts to the table, I think would have been the right approach. It saddens me that we find ourselves in this position at this particular time, and I am deeply concerned about the financial impact that it will have on household budgets, especially in the year 2023 and beyond. I can tell you that I'm going to make sure that our correspondence outlines exactly what this bill is going to cost each and every one of our taxpayers in the great city of Oshawa, and it saddens me at a time where we need to come together as government and as leaders in this country, that this bill, in my opinion, is just dividing us all, and I don't think that that's going to achieve what it wants to achieve. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, councillor Kirk.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you, to the staff who presented today, I guess I got this email because I'm a councillor, and it ostensibly came from the Conservative Party, and they at great lengths explained that the only exemptions would be to DCs would be applied to affordable housing, they would still apply to every other area, and so therefore it wouldn't be that big of an impact. So could you care to comment on the veracity of that statement, and whether in fact these exemptions apply across the board to spur all kinds of housing, or whether in fact there seems to be, according to them, an overreaction that we're still going to get development charges, just not on the affordable housing projects? Could you care to verify that one way or the other, please?
If I may, through the chair, I'll refer you to Slide 18 in the presentation, and it's quoted in our report where we list the impacts of the various components that is known as of today, and that I referenced earlier with respect to having to change our rates retroactively to November 28th for the cost recovery that we're not going to collect right away. So that's really where you see the region's estimation as of today on what the implications are for us from a DC revenue. And as our CAO mentioned, we're undertaking a significant amount of work in the last weekend and the coming few weeks to work through the regional CAO and local CAOs to add the next steps to what this analysis looks like. So the exemption for affordable housing is of benefit to affordable housing providers, but there are a number of other things in the legislation that affect our development charge receipts.
That's what I had thought also. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, councillor Shalit.
Thank you, through you, Chair. This question is for the CAO, and I'm just going to probably just repeat what Mayor Carter had said, this has been very aggressive, and it's definitely extremely grim situation that I've ever seen in my experience, and the pressures of inflation and so on, so forth. You talked about public forum and educating or letting the residents know of the implications of the tax pressures for Bill 23. Now, how do you, how do you go about that? And how soon, I mean, these implications, like you said, started coming as soon as November 28th. So if it reflects on the upcoming cycle of our taxes, how do we open up the forum to let residents know that this is what the pressure is, it's not coming from us, this is pretty much Bill 23 and its taxes?
First of all, I think as the region, we wouldn't launch it as an advocacy campaign to the province, we would try to do that quietly through our contacts. I think the approach would be to, if we are faced with a tax increase that comes from this, to ensure that through our social media, our materials on our website, other media documents, that we are getting the facts out there, and where it is clear that something is as a result of Bill 23, we can certainly identify that, but it is important that we do keep a positive working relationship with the province going forward, because we are so dependent on them for a number of our priorities. So we would definitely not be advocating publicly to create a lot of noise, but we would be ensuring that the public had access to all the facts that it needed around its property taxes and user rates.
Thank you, through you, Chair. I understand you've got to keep a working relationship, but is there, have they opened up some sort of a communication line with the region, or we are just being sent talking points?
The Chair and I did have an opportunity to brief our four MPPs a few weeks ago. Staff at the Ministry of Municipal Affairs have made themselves available to answer questions, but that is about the extent of it at this time. I'll look at the two commissioners in case I've missed anything there, I don't think so.
Thank you, that'll be all, Chair.
Thank you. Mayor Schumer, second time around.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and through to you the staff, I'm sorry I didn't ask these questions on the first round, but what, if anything, does staff know about these third-party audits of select municipalities? Has there been any?
I think I can help you, is I don't think we've heard anything yet.
So there's been no discussion, we haven't heard anything through MPPs or municipal channels about this?
No, anything we've heard has been what's been released in the media, our correspondence that we have all seen, but we haven't been formally notified, we don't know if the region or any of its local municipalities would be on the list, and I think it's very important to find out, and Ms. Taylor can go into this in great detail, we submit a lot of financial reports to the province on a monthly and annual basis, and we are audited ourselves, so there's no lack of accountability or reporting protocols, so we feel quite confident that we're in good footing with whatever we put forward in terms of financial realities.
Yeah, it just seems the province doesn't buy into that. With respect to the, how does the province reconcile their requirements under asset management legislation, and the apparent repulsion to reserves that they appear to be showing here, including their willingness to come in and audit select municipalities? So what's going on, and what's going to be the effect on our asset management plan going forward? If they're going to demand that we start spending these reserves quicker?
First of all, they're not demanding that we spend reserves, they're asking that up to 60% of the reserves be spent or earmarked, we have probably well over 90% of our reserve earmarked for specific projects, so that will not impact the region negatively in any way, shape, or form with respect to what they're thinking, I can't comment on that, I haven't been privy to those discussions.
Yeah, okay, I mean, it would just fall automatically, that under asset management, that the reserves are going to be allocated, so they seem to be talking out of both sides of their mouth. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Second time around, Mayor Foster.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I suggest this is really a first, I moved the motion but didn't speak to it, but here we are. Generally speaking, you'll look at stuff, and you've heard me frequently say that things are shades of gray, you know, there is no black and white, I'm having a hard time finding a lot of gray, a lot of gray in this. I'm not sure if this goes to, like, I guess to the CAO, firstly, I wonder if you could share with the mayors the briefing notes that the MPPs have already got, so I know I will be sitting with our MPPs, I'd be curious to know what information has been shared, we are providing some.
We'll make sure with all members of council.
Yeah, sorry, yes, that's more appropriate.
We'll make sure that every member of council gets a copy of it.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair. The other is in terms of the communications, so item D of the recommendation, I appreciate that trying to pick a fight with the province is not going to get us far. However, I fear that people are going to view property tax increases as something in the future. I don't know how tangible until that tax bill hits them, but we are looking at significant decreases to quality of life. Your next-door neighbor could turn his house into a triplex, which may or may not include the neighbor building simply in their backyard, which may or may not include any architectural control, and we simply don't know. You know, a thousand-square-foot townhouse could house three families in an area where you can't park in the street, the reality is the garage is filled with junk, you've got space for one car, where are the rest of the cars going? We know where they're going. We got into the issue of recreation, you know, police, paramedic services. This is, and I appreciate Mayor Ash trying to call the question on this, this is the most important thing. I can't imagine us dealing with something more important than the fundamental shift that is going on today. I have no idea municipally how we are going to take over on the planning. So getting back to the public education campaign, I guess, two things, should we, as a group, because no one municipality is going to change the dial, and I suspect no one region is either, as a group, should we be articulating the same things so that the public understands this? And I think the public have been distracted by the Green Belt, by the Strong Mayor, you know, by QP, I'm not sure that people understand the depth of this change, and do we know what AMO is looking at doing? So we know that, you know, the big city mayors are grappling with this and will continue to, but AMO would seem to be in the best position to bring this forward. Does anyone have any insight, or have any requests been made of AMO to educate the people of Ontario?
So the region of Durham's representative at AMO is councillor Malka Hee, would you like to comment?
Yes, thank you. AMO tried to speak at Queen's Park, and they were not allowed. So they, it's not that they're not doing anything, it's more of a regrouping, but they are providing numbers to the opposition. I know they've had the ability to speak to the opposition, and I know that they're estimating provincially, I think the last I heard was over $5 billion cost across the province to municipalities. So they are working on it, and I don't have this week's update, but yeah, they're not doing nothing, it's just a matter of regrouping to figure out what they can do.
Thank you for that. So I would suggest perhaps, so I know that the province refused to talk to AMO along with a number of other groups, simply refused to engage in dialogue. We look at what Mrs. Sog is trying to do, but I, you know, I do wonder if AMO is in the best position to be considering some sort of public campaign to educate the public, and not just the financial ramifications. This is a significant rewrite of our society, our communities, as we know them, so I'll leave that, I'll leave that thought with you, Mr. Chair, thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Chapman.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just have some comments. The devil's in the detail on this one, one of the biggest details that we don't have is what's their definition of affordable housing? It used to be 30% of the family income, but when we had money being sent down from higher levels of government, calling it to build affordable housing, the affordable housing that was being built was like $3,500 a month for a one-bedroom apartment, which means what, $100,000 a year would be, the people would have to have $100,000 a year, but that'd be affordable at $3,000, give or take, my math's not good, I'll leave that up to the treasurer. But at any rate, the other thing that is set up for failure is, over the last, at least this term of council, we've developed and had developed about 289, 297, something like that, looking over to the Commissioner of Social Services of affordable housing for the truly people that need affordable housing, not the $3,500 a month housing, and we're well on our way to 1,000, but even with the money that's come down from the federal and provincial government, the time extended to get those approvals from those higher levels of government is what has slowed down some of these developers, because that money is part of their business plan, right, with or without development charges. So now, those people that are going to develop these affordable housing, right, are not going to pay development charges, I'm not sure how that's going to change for truly affordable housing I'm talking about here, but they used to call it social housing, but I don't know how that's going to change those developers' minds to build more. The other definition that we don't know yet is what's attainable housing that isn't going to pay development charges? Does that mean housing that I can attain, right, so I can buy one without development charges that what the government is saying is $116,000 less, which we heard that the developers probably aren't going to reduce that? Or is that another form of affordable housing without a definition for looking after the people that need truly affordable housing, not the market value less 10 or 15%, but truly affordable housing, in a lot of cases subsidized housing? So on top of that, failure to get those developers to build that type of housing as opposed to the 1.5, $2 million houses with reduced development charges or whatever, are they not setting up the municipalities for failure? Because we won't have that for growth, we won't be able to, without charging more taxes to the people, including those that are going to live in affordable and attainable housing, right, to build a new fire hall, to build a police station, right, to support the EMS in the lower-tier municipalities, to build a to build a park with suitable playgrounds for the children that will be living in these affordable and attainable houses, right? So yes, maybe the house might be developed cheaper by the developer, who's not going to sell it any cheaper, right? And the taxes are probably going to go up, probably going to go up, on the regular people, including those that need affordable and attainable houses. Or we aren't going to be able to supply all those things, those necessities. God knows, look at the problem we're having right now with the health care and the money that we're looking for for health care, right? That's coming out of provincial and federal taxes. So is this going to come out of more provincial taxes? Or are we going to take it from all this make the communities, you know, whole again because the development charges won't be there for the things that we need to provide? Not what we want to provide, what we need to provide to our residents, right? So where is that money going to come from? Is the provincial and federal taxes going to be raised as well? Or are some of our other systems that are looked after at the higher level, such as health care, are they going to go into more of a default downward spiral? Just some comments to think about when the staff have their comments and they're across the table and yelling back and forth and maybe close to a punch-up, I don't know, with the provincial government. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Councillor Pickles.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to advise you, and I previously advised the clerk, that I had to step out for a meeting at two o'clock with Durham Region Police Service. I am back. And if you could just clarify for me where we are in the agenda. It showed on my phone as being on Cal Report thirty-three.
No. So councillor Pickles, the agenda was changed. We're actually on item seven point five. The report's on page sixty-six of your agenda.
And what report is that, sorry?
It's the implication, yeah, Bill twenty-three on the region of Durham, implication.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair. Has the question been called or are we still debating it?
No, it was called and it was called and lost. But you are the last speaker before we get to the question, except I have a question to staff.
Well, thank you. I think I provided a number of comments before I had to leave at two o'clock, so I won't repeat the questions and comments I had at that time. Thank you.
Thank you. To our Commissioner of Finance, I am, as like all members of council, challenged by the comments that the province has made related to reserves. And I think the challenge that we have is one is, of course, we can't run deficits. But our financial reporting to the province, it's mandatory each year, has a line, a single line, that says reserves. It doesn't say reserves allocated. It just says reserves. Is that correct?
So if I may, there is a multitude of reports at varying levels of detail. So our annual audited financial statements indicate the balance, our total reserve, and notes to that statement break it down by category and reason. We also submit what's called the Financial Information Return, and it also lays out a breakdown in continuity schedules for reserve funds. So there are a number of other reporting mechanisms as well. Those are the two annualized ones.
But would the M P Ps for our region actually understand what our allocated reserves are?
Through the chair, I would suggest to you that municipal financial reporting, as we've talked about a number of times, is not particularly user-friendly. It's mandatorily set the way it's presented. It is not necessarily easy for any reader to interpret.
Maybe we have an opportunity for an educational experience for our M P Ps. That is. So members of council, we have one speaker in the box, councillor Neil.
Yeah, first came on regional council. The province downloaded the ambulance to us, E M S. Then they downloaded social housing, and they said that we had the development charges to use as a tool to absorb this. So things, I guess, have changed in regards to what's gone in the last twenty-some-plus years. Thanks.
Thank you. Members of council, that exhausts the speaker list. The item is before you. I will call the vote. Is it a recorded vote or just show hands? Call the vote then. All those in favor? In opposition? None? That carries. Mr. Clerk, we'll move back on to the agenda. We're now on to item seven point one. It's located on page three of your agenda. Just let me get to the right page. Mayor Foster. Request to speak. Just push the button. There you go here, Michael, come on.
Happy to move that, Mr. Chair.
Moved by Mayor Foster. Look for a second here, please, just a hand. Councillor Brennan. The item is now on the floor. Members of council, comments or questions? Seeing none, Mr. Clerk, I'll call the vote. All those in favor? In opposition? None? That carries. We'll move on to item seven point two. Just let me get to the pages. But I appreciate the enthusiasm, Mayor Carter. It's located on page thirty-two of your agenda. Moved by Mayor Carter, seconded by councillor Anderson. The item is now on the floor. Comments or questions? Then we'll call the vote. All those in favor? In opposition? Seeing none? That carries. We're now on to seven point four. That's located on page fifty-three of your agenda. Oh, sorry, seven point, we're on seven point three. I apologize. Seven point three, and it's on page forty-one of your agenda. Okay. Look, moved by Mayor Watten, seconded by councillor Shaheed. It's now on the floor. Councillor Dyce.
Got it. Thank you. Again, to the clerk, and we spoke to this previously, to bring this up for this seven point three report, to include, instead of submitting the whole motion again, as it is very close to what staff has provided, to include number three of the therefores in the C A O's letter to the province for discussion.
So sorry. Mr. Clerk, where would that go if you had the agenda? So it's on page... Just give us one second. Can you read the wording? So this would be an amendment to add an item C? Mr. Clerk?
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. The amendment would be to add a new Part C that council asked that the province return environmental and green belt protections to the Duffins Rouge Agricultural Preserve.
Okay. So move by, give me a second. Need a second. Okay, first hand up was councillor Malkahe. Would you like to speak to your amendment?
Well, just briefly. Basically, the motion, as I said, was in line with what staff had reported and greatly appreciated all the work that went into that, was trying to basically, I guess, provide an opportunity to help provide some substance and answers to the residents who have a great deal of anxiety over what is happening. And it's an opportunity, when we do a motion to speak, to show where we stand, and that's what they were looking for. But as, you know, and we did have, I did have a discussion with the clerk, and as most of the issues and concerns were very much related and covered in both the motion and staff's reports, the only thing that was not was to make sure that the province returns the environmental green belt protections to the Ag Rouge Preserve. So I think that's very, very important. The environment has no borders, and I think we have to preserve the green belt that we have right now. Thank you.
Councillor Malkahe is the second. Okay. Back to the speakers list, Mayor Ash.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm, if I could see the amendment, that'd be fine. If I might, if I could dash through you to the mover. Is the intent to ask the province to put back the lands that's not used under their proposal or all the lands? I was unclear what... I see it now. But one can make the observation that all the lands could be go back in, or one can make the argument, I think that the Commissioner of Planning suggested that about fifty percent of the lands that were pulled out of the green belt were, I'm not quite sure what his adjective was, but I think he used indevelopable or natural heritage or something along that line. So I'm not sure if there's, if my friend from Ajax could clarify that, please.
And I guess I need clarification from you then, because I mean, I understand that your river values have been taken into consideration by the province to be protected in the green belt, but we can't build on them anyway. I'm thinking that the ag preserve as it stands and has been protected with easements in particular, extra protection has to remain, should remain as is. It's a critical part of agricultural lands. It's critical to the Duffins Creek, and there's some heritage systems in there that need to be looked after. And I think that should be part of the discussion with the province. So we don't know where that discussion will go.
Okay, thank you for that clarity, because I'm getting two different messages. I think councillor Dyce suggests that all the green, all the ag preserve should go back in the green belt, but that's not the government's position. The Commissioner of Planning suggests approximately fifty-fifty could be developed or potentially has, I don't want to speak for Mr. Bridgman, so could I have you clarify what his presentation were about the twenty-four hundred acres taken out of the green belt? I thought he said something like fifty percent potentially could be built.
Thank you. The answer I gave in response to the question, which I thought was how much of the forty-two hundred acres is natural heritage system? And I commented it was in the vicinity of two thousand acres. I wasn't commenting on the appropriateness or the developability of the balance. I was just giving a number in terms of the overall ag preserve and how much of that would be natural heritage system.
Okay. And I think that's, fifty percent approximately was natural heritage. I'm not suggesting, and he was suggesting that it should be developed. So that gives some clarity to it. I don't think this particular motion's necessary, only because the overall report speaks to staff's concern about it. It speaks to the viability of it not actually adding housing stock in a short period of time. It goes on to suggest that that is not appropriate. So I'm not quite sure if you need a layer over a layer. And the other thing is, we're already past the deadline. I can tell you that councillor Brenner brought a motion at City Council, it seemed so long ago, but it was last Monday, to delete our staff's comments in support of development of the green belt, because that's, in essence, what Pickering's position has traditionally been. And that motion by councillor Brenner was passed seven zero to delete the support of the development by the staff's position. Again, already done, past the deadline. So we altered the comments. So we're going to be altering these comments that have already been submitted and, again, past the registry deadline for comments. So I'm not quite sure if it's necessary, but I appreciate the clarity that the Commissioner and councillor Dyce have brought to it.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, I have to go to the screen. Okay. Mayor Foster.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Resisted the temptation to push that button. Mr. Bridgman, I think I heard the answer, but this gives rise to a question. Do we have any concerns that the removal of these lands will impact the protection of the natural heritage systems that are there already? So I mean, if that's the case, you know, then we may want to broadly request that the province, not just in the Rouge Agricultural Reserve, but, you know, clearly across any of the lands coming out, that what needs to be protected needs to be protected. So I can't recall anything in the report or in the letter that speaks to that. I think our staff in Clarendon suggested that they would still be protected. Is your opinion the same?
Through you, Mr. Chair. We couldn't say with any confidence whether they would be properly protected because the environmental work hasn't been done. And that was sort of my very final comment in the presentation before I passed it over to Commissioner Taylor. The other thing I did comment in the presentation was saying we didn't think that the lands were even needed in the first place to achieve some of the targets that have been set.
Yeah, so I don't disagree with that, but I, you know, I wonder if this motion should broadly apply to the three parcels that are coming across in Durham, if there are concerns.
Oh, I see.
That if there are concerns that they're coming out and that things that should be protected are not being protected, they should continue to be protected regardless of whether, you know, they're, well, if they're in, they are, but if they're pulled out, just to ensure that. So I think you answered that and said that you don't necessarily have confidence that natural heritage systems will be protected as they should be. And again, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but is that what I heard?
I think that's a fair comment because the work hasn't been done. And we also know through this bill that the role of conservation authorities in planning matters is also being curbed. So on a variety of levels, while, you know, in the normal course, this, all this work gets done and we get this level of comfort, in the way this is rolling out, the normal types of studies and protections and so on, we don't have any information in terms of how that might take place. So I can't provide the confidence.
I've spoken to it. I can't move an amendment. I don't know if it might be friendly, but I'm thinking that Part C, something relating to all the lands coming out, if there are, again, if there are things that should be protected, they should be protected. Thank you.
Mr. Clerk? I see no other comments in the speakers box. So I will call for a vote on the amendment. The amendment is on your screens. Okay. So on the amendment, we'll call for the vote. All those in favor? Opposed? Opposed? Just want to oppose, that carries on the amendment. The main motion has amended? We'll call the vote? Oh, sorry, comments on the main motion has amended? It'll come on by itself. There you go.
Sorry, Mr. Chair, but I'm going to come back and, because this came up in certainly the information, so I would add a Part D, the suggestion, if you can put Part C back up, because it's C, just... Suggestion, if you can put part C back up, because it's C just missing. You know, that council asked that the province return environmental and green belt protections to the affected areas. You know, again, just on the basis that if there's stuff that should be protected.
So wait a second. So this would be an item D?
Correct.
Okay. Say it, but don't speak to it till you get a second here.
So that council asked that the province return environmental and green belt protections to the areas being removed.
Okay. Looking for a second here. Seconded by Counselor Woo. On on the amendment. And we'll need that in writing, too, please. Comments or questions on the amendment? Call the vote on the amendment. All those in favor? In opposition? None, that carries. Okay. Sorry, members of council, my my screen is over here and my microphone is over here. I'm on wheels, so it does, it does work and it'll be addressed. Seeing no speakers in the in the request to speak. So on the main motion, as amended, including items C and D, we'll call the vote. Oh, sorry, Counselor Neal, that, you have to use your request button. Okay, record a vote is always in order. Mr. Clerk, when you're ready?
On the main motion as amended, an electronic recorded vote will now begin.
Okay. That carries. Members of council, we will move on to item seven point four. Time-limited construction funding subsidy for long-term care home in the city of Pickering. It's on page fifty-three of your agenda. Okay, thank you. So I heard moved by Counselor Chapman, seconded by Counselor Brenner. And now the item is on the floor. Check. Okay, Counselor Brenner, you're in the speakers box.
Sorry.
You were, but you're not. Okay, thank you. Comments or questions? Seeing none, Mr. Clerk, we'll call the vote. All those in favor? In opposition? Seeing none, that carries. We'll move on to item eight point one. Moved by Counselor Chapman, seconded by Counselor Anderson. Is there anyone wishing to go into closed session on this item? Seeing none, I will call the vote then. All those in favor? In opposition? Seeing none, that carries. We'll go to item number nine, other business. Mayor Carter.
Thank you very much, Chair Henry. I have a few questions just in regards to some updates. And I'm just wondering if our Commissioner of Health and Social Services or our CAO may be able to help me get a better understanding. As as we know, tomorrow, we're going to have one heck of a storm, I guess, coming in. And so there's a lot of concern in regards to those that are unfortunately unsheltered. I'm just wondering, how how are we doing? Through you, Chair Henry, to, I guess, the Commissioner of Social Service, how are we doing in regards to the Safe Sleep Program and warming stations across the region of Durham? I'm just wondering if you might be able to give us an insight.
Through the chair, thank you for that question, Mayor Carter. Our, our warming centers have already started, and we have warming centers located in Oshawa through extension of our shelter system, as well as through other providers who are supporting us. We have Oshawa, we have Ajax, we have Whitby, and working closely with our northern partners to support those who need support through their hotel program.
So Commissioner, do we have, do we have any warming stations in either Clarrington or Pickering at this time?
Not Clarrington. Pickering does have a warming center through their community center during cold weather alerts, when the temperature drops to minus fifteen or below.
Just out of curiosity, through you, Chair Henry, I know that there's been a lot of schools that are being bought out by developers. Have we spoken to the developers or of their holdings to see if they can be utilized at times like this or on a, on a short-term lease or a long-term lease in regards to this issue at all?
Through the chair, no, we have not had a conversation with developers on this.
Okay.
Take that away, certainly.
Are the school board, has has there been any discussion with the school boards, then?
Not the school boards, Mayor Carter, no.
All right.
I can add, though, I can add that we are confident with the spaces that we have today that we are able to support those who want to come in and be supported.
Do we have any type of numbers across the region of how many we have that are unsheltered at this particular time?
I have the, I can get the numbers for the by-name list, if that's what you're looking for. It was three hundred in last month, sorry, in October. I believe it dropped to two sixty for November. So the number has come down, which is great. However, that's still two hundred and sixty people who are unsheltered.
So can I just, just because it begs me to ask this question, if we have two hundred and sixty-five individuals on that list, we have two hundred and sixty-five individuals looking or seeking for warming opportunities? Are those opportunities across the region of Durham available?
For the two hundred and sixty folks, I'm looking at my director over here. Yes, we do have the space for those folks who want to come in. Yes.
Okay. Want to follow up on something that may or may not be available, which is Sunnycrest in Whitby. It was a, I guess, a seniors facility. I'm wondering, has, have we looked at that particular facility to see if it may be available to help us in in a short-term or a long-term basis?
I'll have our CAO respond.
Yep.
That facility has been sold to a developer, so in the long term, it's not an option. I, we have not approached them on our short-term opportunities, given that we learned that the property had already been sold.
Okay. I I wasn't, I wasn't aware that it was, it was sold. So that's, that's new news to me. Is there any way that we can see if we can reach out to them to see if they'd be interested in a short-term relationship with the region of Durham to help us with the unsheltered population? Would that option be available?
Yes, we can certainly have that discussion.
I'd really appreciate it. Just, everybody's looking for ideas and concepts in regards to how to be able to do it, because my understanding is that particular facility has about a hundred and thirty-five beds that may be available. That would be a huge, huge help in regards to the opportunity there. So I'm just, I'm hoping that we might be able to look at that. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate the opportunity to ask those questions here today, sir.
Okay, thank you. Is there any other member of council under other business, Counselor Lee?
On a lighter note, Counselor Mayor Piaci reminded me that typically the last regional council meeting, there's like a, like a Christmas lunch we could all kind of throw into. Will that be happening this year?
With the challenges of COVID, no.
Sorry, do you know? Okay, thank you, Chair.
But it doesn't mean, it doesn't mean that you you can't go out and help support the local economy at lunch break on the last council meeting. I'm going to leave that. Oh, yeah, I appreciate the latitude. I really, before I call for the last, last thing, I want to just recognize our clerk's team for the work that they've done trying to get our council chambers the technology that we utilize today. Now, there has been some hiccups, and there has been a few hiccups in committee. But this will be what other council chambers across the country look like down the road. And this is, Mr. Clerk, if I'm correct, the first of its kind. We are proving that we are leaders again. But the work that went on and the training that took place and the work that Roger up in the booth did really needs to be recognized. And on behalf of council, we're thankful for bringing us into the, to the year 2023. Thank you. On that note, I really, I'm looking for the, the last thing of the day. Counselor Chapman? No, I I recognize you right away. How's that? Seconded by Counselor Shaheed. Honored journey. All those in favor? In opposition? In opposition, and that carries. I will look forward to seeing you all on the twenty-third, twenty-first. Thank you. Have a safe evening.